Are we rolling?
Yes.
Okay, I'm coming to you in less than a minute. All right. Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic where it stands. One nation under God.
Individual liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember O'Kane.
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember File.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis has been excused.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. The agenda will stand approved as written unless there's an objection. Hearing none. The agenda stands approved. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I still move. Second.
And I'll second. Is there any further discussion or any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next, we have an introduction. We have a brand new staffer who we are all anticipating meeting. Mr. Carl, do we want, do we want Mr. Carlinsey? Would you like to do this?
Yes, please.
Please.
Well, first of all, how often do you see two finance administration director squares on your Zoom screen? Will the real director please stand up? There, whoa, look at that. Two finance directors on one screen. How can that be? Well, as you know, there's, we have a week of overlap with Joanne Gregory, our outgoing finance director, and our incoming finance director, Letitia Salcedo. And you can see her on your screen. I'll give a little introduction and then turn a little bit of time over to her. But we're very fortunate to have her join our organization. We did a nationwide search for Joanne's replacement and we got a lot of really good qualified applicants. Some really good applicants just right around here in the region. So it was a very rigorous process. We had multiple panels do interviews of the different candidates and it was quite, quite thorough and lengthy process, but in the end, Letitia just stood out and really rose to the top. And anyway, we're just thrilled that she's willing to take this on. Just a little bit of background on Letitia and she can fill in some gaps if she wants to, but she comes to us from Southern California and in particular, the empirical Imperial Valley and where she spent most of her life. She has over 23 years of experience in local government finance, including 13 years as the Director of Finance for the city of El Centro, California, which is a full-service city. And she's got a lot of experience in capital projects and bond issues and many other depth and breadth type things when it comes to finance. And so we're really fortunate that we have her willing to come up here and and like I said, it was a rigorous process. Lots of really good people to choose from as far as who could be our next finance director, but we're just really glad that we offered her the job and she willing to take it. So she's coming up all the way from California. I think if she does have a learning curve, it's going to be, you know, Washington State and how we're a little different from California. But other than that, she comes to us with a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience. So, Letitia, do you want to say anything?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. It is a great honor to be here before you as your new Director of Finance and Administration. It is an honor to be here. I love this city. I love the upward trajectory and the mission, vision, and goals of the city. This is a great and beautiful city that offers multiple opportunities, both all in recreational job opportunities and housing opportunities. And it's one that I am very proud to be, to call home now. I love this city, the scenery, the landscape, the multiple recreational opportunities and and the team that you have here with the city. I come to you with 23 years of municipal financial experience, 10 years as the Assistant Finance Director, and then 10, 13 years with the City of El Centro and as a finance director, the City of El Centro, a full-service city with police, fire, recreation, library, water, wastewater funds, 40,000, 45,000 in population and an annual budget, all funds of approximately 107 million, general fund budget of 30 million. I have experienced developing budgets in a limited resource environment, which is normal for most of the cities. But in addition to that, I have experienced working through recessions and being able to work with council and city manager and developing budgets to pull the city through those situations. The recession of 2010 and just various, various other downturns in the economy. I bring that experience to this city and I'm very proud to be working with a great team that you already have in place. City manager, department heads, and I'm looking forward to the cooperation and the teamwork that will be part of my new life here at the city and more so my employment here with the City of Kenmore. I am proud to be now part of the Washington culture. I look forward to knowing more about the, what the state has to offer, the city has to offer. And, and I'm excited and I look forward to meeting each and every one of you.
Do any, do you have any questions for Letitia?
Yes, I want to know. We've done everything we can to make the weather very similar to El Centro. And I'm wondering if you feel it though.
Very different. What made me decide to move away was the summer, 125 degrees. And that's when I said, I can't take this anymore. So I love this weather. I love the rain. Thank you.
We can't compete with that.
No.
I'm sure that we will make it up in many other ways.
I'm sure you will.
You're joining the staff that we love and respect and we think the world of our staff and we are really, really pleased to welcome you to our city.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And like I said, I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Yeah. So you had something I saw.
The mayor read my thoughts. I was just going to ask, you know, if they told you about the rain, that's all.
Oh, I know about the rain. And I'm ready. I, like I said, I love this, this state. I love the weather and I love the opportunities in the city. Yes.
If the lack of sunshine gets to you, you can go to Costco and buy what's known as a happy light.
Oh, okay.
Well, would it be okay if you just went around and introduced yourselves really quick?
Yes. Let's start with Councilmember O'Kane.
I was just unmuting. Sorry for the delay. I'm Councilmember O'Kane. I'm sure happy to have you here and really looking forward to you working with us. Really detailed introduction of yourself. We are so thrilled and Rob just was really excited to have you coming on board. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Councilmember Joe Marshall. Thank you for accepting the position. Really look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Sure, yeah. Depris Shrubnik. And again, just echoing others, we're just delighted to have you on board and and glad to know you won't be shocked by the dreariness in the winter.
Oh, no, no. Nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Councilmember File.
Thank you. Councilmember File here. It's so nice to meet you and have you join our team. We are so fortunate and lucky to have you out with a fine city of Kenmore. You're going to love it here. And we couldn't have had a better candidate join our ranks. So thank you for taking the position.
Thank you so much. Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, hi, I'm Deputy Mayor Nigel Herbig. We're excited to have you here. I know that Rob has really high standards and Joanna said great things about you, so we're excited to have you on board and I wish that we could actually meet in person at some point, but welcome to the city. And thank you for making the trek up here.
Oh, thank you. My pleasure. Nice to meet you.
Mr. City Manager, anything further?
No, that's it.
All right. So.
I just want to say, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Have a good evening. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the business agenda and it's going to be planning commission interviews and discussion and action. So the city clerk has sent out an email that has a list of questions. So I would suggest we use those questions and we try to stick to them so that every interviewer, interviewee has the same opportunity and not change things around because it gets really frustrating for an interviewee when the questions are changed. And so if we can stick to the questions the way they are, that would be appreciated. And let's start in order with question number one would go to Melanie O'Kane and then Councilmember Marshall and then Councilmember Shrubnik and then Councilmember File and then Deputy Mayor and then me. And then the second time around, we'll just shift one. So that Councilmember Marshall will start with the first question. But we all get an opportunity for all the questions. And the clerk has also listed the, listed an order. And since we have it and it's there in front of us, I suggest we stick with that order. So are there was any two objections into the process? All right. So let's go ahead and start this with the first applicant would be Nathan Lutzis.
Mayor Baker. If you would allow me to alert all of our attendees what the order is so they can accordingly. Thank you for joining us this evening. The interview order will be as follows. Number one, Nathan Lutzis. Number two, Rose Hendricks. Number three, Marielle Torres-Metapore. Number four, Emily Burnham. Number five, Tracy Benazinski. Number six, Carlos Gill. Number seven, Dwight Thompson. And number eight, John Culver. I also want to remind everyone attending that these meetings are recorded and they will be uploaded to YouTube.
So the first person will be Nathan Lutzis and Councilmember O'Kane will ask the first question. So.
We're waiting for Mr. Lutzis. He's connecting right now.
Great. There he is.
Hello, Nathan. Thank you so much for applying. I have the honor of giving you the first question and that is, please provide a two to three minute overview of why you believe you are a good candidate for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank the city council for giving me this opportunity. As for myself, I believe I would make an exceptional candidate because not only do I have the experience under my belt following my time on the planning commission these last two years, but I also have a lot ahead of me as well and a lot to offer. And part of that, I believe, that I have to offer is my age, which is something unique. You do not see a lot of younger citizens in some of our surrounding cities as involved. And I feel that this is a crucial piece to a productive city is having representation from all different aspects of the city, all different demographics and all different categories of citizens within the city. And I believe that my position here with the planning commission, at least over these last two years, has helped to represent that and voice some of the opinions of my constituents and my peers. And I also feel that some of the insight I have, some of the ideas I have, you know, might be a little more finer tuned to the next generation of Kenmore city citizens and business owners that'll be up and coming in the next several years. Right now, I'm a freshman in, at the University of Washington. I just joined this, this last fall. And, you know, some of the topics we discuss and work around on the planning commission are projects that won't be completed until, you know, several years down the pipeline and looking at it several years down. Those people that I represent, my, my peers and the people I've gone to school with will be now within the workforce and then the new set of homeowners within the city of Kenmore. So I believe that having a voice on the planning commission that is younger, because, you know, there are seven positions on the planning commission and having at least one with a new perspective, a different perspective, something that is, you know, coming from the next generation, I feel is very beneficial for the city to have. And I believe along with this, as I've said, my experience with the planning commission over the last two years, I've learned a lot. I now understand how it operates and functions and I've really gotten into a groove. I've completed the training so far and the, the other classes that have been required of commissioners. And so I already have that and I'll be able to jump right back in and continue on. I've built a good reputation and good relationship with my fellow commissioners on the commission. And I feel that continuing on would help to continue that and we'd be able to work more smoothly. I also feel that as a citizen of the city of Kenmore, somebody who's lived here my whole life, also coming from a family who's been here. Well, my grandparents moved to the Kenmore area in 1958. My dad grew up in the city of Kenmore. I grew up in the city of Kenmore. I just come from a long line of people really ingrained and in tune with the city. I feel we've been well established and I believe it would be beneficial to have somebody younger like myself, somebody with the experience and somebody who's been really ingrained and involved with the local community to be a part of this commission.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Thanks for applying, Mr. Lutzis. What do you think of the most important land use issues and planning issues coming up in the next few years?
Well, let's see. So I voiced some, some ideas about this two years ago when I was sitting in front of you. And as I've progressed through my career on the planning commission, you know, I've come to realize that the city council, you know, releases a docket every year on what we do as a, as a commission. And we humbly serve the, the city council. And I believe several years ago, as I had mentioned previously and still believe that the city should really focus a lot of its efforts on the preservation and the utilization of its park spaces, open spaces, recreation areas, and particularly the waterfront. So far, as you know, we've discussed over the last two years, we've gone over the pros plan, the parks, recreation and open space plan. And our city is doing very, very well relatively compared to a lot of the other cities in our area. We have a tremendous number of parks with great accessibility. But, you know, personally, there are some, I feel that there are still some areas to improve upon that. And I feel that, you know, the preservation of these parks is, is a really important thing, especially now considering the such, the importance of such concept as, as social, I'm sorry, excuse me, as climate change and activities, you know, parks provide a place for people as in the social distancing world that we now live, for them to get out and really actively participate with, with their families outside, you know, it gives a spot. And I think that that's going to be huge in the, the near future if we continue on this path of social distancing and staying at home. Parks provide this opportunity for people to really get out there and allow people, our citizens within the city to, to have this small bit of freedom and to really refresh. And I believe it really helps both their physical and mental health if we have these things. So it's, I believe that the parks, the waterfront and our recreation things that we have within the city, I believe that these are really important to our citizens. And I believe that they're really important socially for things that we should be working towards. And I also believe that, you know, our park space is very limited within the city. And so if we can get on it sooner rather than later, it's harder to make parks later with land that's already developed. And so it's just something that I believe we should do. Along with this, another belief of mine is, you know, the continued development of the downtown quarter. I mean, this downtown quarter, as people go in and out, is the face of the city. It's what they see. And we've done a tremendous job updating City Hall with the improvements and the addition of the Hanger and the Kenmore City Library. And all along this downtown quarter, I believe it's, it's really brought up the image of our city to those who are passing by and really made those who commute through our city stop and say, hey, this is a place that I might want to move to. I might want to live. And so I believe that that is a, continuing on that path is something really beneficial for our city and would help to increase, you know, businesses and the, the attraction to, of businesses and potential residents in the future.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
There. Nice to see you, Nathan. So please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team? What techniques did you and or the group use to reach a decision? And in hindsight, would you have you done anything differently?
Oh goodness. You know, teamwork is something that I really encounter almost day to day, still even with social distancing, virtually group projects within school and whatnot, a lot of those kinds of things. But I'd have to say that I work a lot as a team member with my fellow commissioners on the city commission. We have to work together to come up with ideas and really represent the ideas of the citizens of the city on certain topics and projects such as ADUs, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, other capital gains plans and the other topics that are presented before us by the city. And so I feel that working with six other commissioners, it's really helped to develop my skills of being a team player and a team member and really helped me to, you know, step back and listen to what others have to say, their contributions and and really evaluate the merits that they have to bring to the table. Now with the commission, I believe this is specifically relevant compared to say a group project at school because the, you know, being on the commission as somebody so much younger, it was, it was a shock at first. I don't have really somebody to relate to as much on, on the commission. So it provided me the opportunity to really sit back and kind of figure out where I stand within this group of citizens who have been working together for so many years, because I believe at the time that Commissioner Greathouse and I were the only two additions. So there was a cohort of five that were still on the commission. Being a new guy and not just a new guy, but a really young guy too at that, you know, it really provided me the opportunity and, and the position to sit back and really take in what all of these other experienced commissioners and citizens of Kenmore had to offer. And so being as a part of that team, it's really helped to develop my ability to stand back when, when it is needed and really work with others and their ideas towards a common goal. In this case, it was working towards projects for the city. And so I feel that that's really benefited me and my ability to work with others. It's also given me the chance over these last two years to start to know my role and, and, or my position among, among the others and start to be more confident in my ability to, you know, take a point with it and run and bring up ideas that I think are important and really emphasizing back those ideas. And so I believe that as a team member, over these last few years, I've really developed in my ability to balance the time when I, you need to step back and listen to my teammates and work with them and also have the courage to now step up with ideas that I believe are important to me and work with those so that we can all come together to compromise on what we feel is the best plan for the city.
Thank you.
Want to give you a little heads up. We're down to about three minutes left. And we want to be fair and keep everybody to the same time. Councilmember File.
Thank you. Mr. Lutzis, thank you for applying to the planning commission. The question, the planning commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the planning commission facilitate discussion and decision-making to work towards resolution when conflicting opinions are expressed? And how would you suggest the planning commission consider conflicting opinions expressed during public hearing?
So I pride myself on my ability to try and compromise with others. And I think that is most important when dealing with such controversial issues. Although I haven't ever experienced in my two years, anything extraordinarily controversial on the city planning commission. It's usually fairly, you know, pretty comfortable or laid back, you know, there's nothing too high up there. But I feel that with controversial topics, everybody's voice and opinion matters. I feel that even people that you may not agree with still have very valid points and pros to bring to the table. And their opinion, their belief is just as valid as my own and just as valid as everybody else is in the room. That goes for public hearings as well and with citizens. I feel that the citizens' voice, well, the planning commission as a whole represents the citizens. We are citizens who have been appointed to a voluntary position. And so their ideas, their opinions are, should, should be what drive us as well. And if there is a majority consensus of, on a certain topic or ideas, I believe that we should really listen to them and take that into account because we represent those people.
Deputy Mayor.
If you are selected by the city council to be one of the seven members on the planning commission, you'll be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure the planning commission recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and visions?
So I initially got in to this or attempted to apply for this position just so I could represent my constituents and my peers around my age. And I feel that each of the other commissioners fairly represents their communities that they're involved in. I don't believe that there are two commissioners who are always hanging out together there from all different aspects of the community. But I believe to represent the voices of the people best is through the process that we currently have in place through public hearings. through public hearings with those in the city that they can voice their opinions. And we have those citizen comment times during our meetings for them to voice their opinions. And we need to be able to take those into consideration when we apply ourselves to the projects that we're working on.
So last question. Uh, if appointed to the commission, would you be available to meet on the first and third Tuesday evening of each month?
Yes, sir. There's not a meeting I've missed in two years. I will be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anastasia, on time.
Right on time. Did you hear the buzzer?
No, I didn't. Thank you.
Quite literally right on.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Luthis. We really appreciate hearing from you. And now we will go to Rose Hendricks.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
That's fine. Councilmember Marshall, could you start us off?
Ms. Hendricks, thank you for applying and coming out tonight. Would you please provide a two to three minute overview of why you believe you're a good candidate for the planning commission?
Certainly. And thank you for selecting me to interview. I was a little bit surprised to hear I was selected when I heard how deep the field of candidates was. So I think I'm a good candidate for planning commission because I think I bring a unique perspective to something that's not seen as often in city government, which is that I'm an engineer and that I defended my PhD in March of this year, which was kind of a crazy time. It was in human system interaction. And I think the unique perspective I bring is that I have a really deep experience with that designing or updating or even measuring any system that involves humans is extremely non-trivial. And being a, um, city government is essentially a sort of system of how people organize and how people are able to live productively as a community and have communal resources such as sidewalks and roads. And that sort of systems level thinking, um, I think that I gained in my academic work, I think is really valuable. Um, I didn't include my academic CV in the original application because I don't think it in itself has anything that makes me a good candidate. Like, I don't think my academic work is a good reason to pick me, but I think that the systems level thinking that it fostered does improve my candidacy. I know I am quite new to Kenmore, in particular, I think relative to the other members of, or the other interviewees, but I think that sometimes a fresh perspective can be good. Thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah. So hello, Rose. What do you think are the most important land use and planning issues that the city should address in the next few years?
I think that as the greater Seattle area is the suffering from housing affordability issues in general, I think it's really, really important to preserve affordable housing for people who live in Kenmore and to be able to make it so people aren't pushed out as prices are increasing and there's increasing development that's looking to come in while still being able to maintain and improve the things that make Kenmore really great. So maintaining park space and maintaining the, the signature trees and all of those lovely, lovely green spaces. But also improving accessibility, like the sidewalks on 61st and making those walkable and accessible because accessible except for a really dangerous spot means it's not accessible in practice. Um, and so being able to keep people in the community who have lived here a long time while still being able to welcome new voices. But, uh, making the community also more accessible.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Ms. Rose Henderson. Please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team? What techniques did you or the group use to reach a decision? In hindsight, would you have done anything else differently?
So I've worked with a number of collaborators in my academic work as well as in my professional work, but I'll talk about my academic work. The experiments that I ran to complete my PhD generally involved between two to three collaborators, not counting the test subjects. So in order to make design decisions about what, what would be recorded, how we would run experiments, how would you be able to organize getting people in, getting people through, all these kinds of things. The most important thing was transparency and being able to understand what people were able to contribute, what they felt comfortable with, what was important to them in the process. And being able to figure out a way to honor all of those while being productive and moving forward. And not getting super bogged down in details about that. I would say my strategies for that largely involves being really available and being able to chase people down and say, hey, I really need to talk to you about this thing. In hindsight, um, I would have extended the deadline for my dissertation, but that would not have been ideal for pandemic reasons. But the better answer for would I have done anything differently, I think, is to recognize that I needed to have a little bit more flexibility in terms of what anyone else was able to do and where they were at, even if I thought maybe they should be able to give a little more to understand that maybe that's not where they were at.
Thank you, Mrs. Henderson.
Deputy Mayor.
The planning commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the planning commission facilitate discussion and decision making to work towards resolution when conflicting opinions are expressed? And how would you suggest the planning commission consider conflicting opinions expressed during a public hearing?
So for the first question as to how to address conflicting opinions, I would say that again, I come back to transparency about what people value and what people are afraid of in their resistance to an idea or that kind of thing, like to take ADUs, to take a recent controversial example. For people who want to have an ADU, what are like, what, what is the concern that they have that the ADU would address? Like, are they worried about getting pushed out of their homes? Are they worried about? Maybe they have one in their house and they're really worried that they're going to get in trouble for it and they want to be able to understand what can change. Um, and for the people who really don't want to have ADUs, like what, what are their actual concerns? Is it that the character of the neighborhood will change? Is it that they're afraid there won't be any parking? Are they afraid that the ability to have ADUs is going to push them out of the neighborhood and they won't be able to save? And I, I think that controversial issues are, become a proxy for other concerns which are addressable with specific criteria. And while that is certainly not always possible, I think it's certainly more possible that I can feel when a controversial issue first comes up. Um, and so I guess my answer is transparency and being able to really get at the heart of what people care about in an issue that they're getting heated about. I forgot the second part of the question. Can you repeat it? You're muted.
Yeah. Uh, how would you suggest the planning commission consider conflicting opinions expressed during a public hearing?
Uh, so expressed by the public during a, yeah.
Yeah.
If it is the kind of situation where, I mean, it, it depends on the, on the specific opinions on a specific issue. So if it's a issue that is sort of largely decided and it's not really new, it's not really controversial. Generally, it's something that other cities do, then it would prompt a discussion, but not, and it's like one or two people, it would certainly prompt a discussion. We would want to make sure that those people feel heard, but it's not necessarily going to change the eventual answer. If it is something where a lot of people show up and it is clearly a, a topic of a lot of concern, then I think that would prompt a very serious discussion and possibly talking about it and coming back in the next meeting after we've sort of learned more about why this is. I guess it would be surprising for it to be a problem if it is in that scenario. To be able to understand more of their concerns and maybe, I don't actually know if this is appropriate, but to reach out to citizens directly and be able to talk to them more about what their concern is, if that's not appropriate, just so you know. Very new to this. Yes, that is how I would do it.
Thank you.
If you were selected to, by the city council to be one of the seven members on the planning commission, you will be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure the planning commission recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and visions?
So I like the, I like the public hearing aspect of the planning commission meetings. However, I I need to do some more reading about honestly how to do this best because it seems like many ways would be either useless or worse than useless, but I would really like there to be more not openness, but promotion of sort of what upcoming issues are that are going on in the community to be able to get those strong reactions as opposed to this is happening and then people get upset. So being, um, I, the public hearing is great, um, but it, it can also be kind of intimidating, I will say, as someone who is new, um, this year to sort of engagement in that kind of way. So I think more clarity about, you know, if you have questions or concerns of being able to, like, engage with the public in other ways and being able to seek out, meeting more people in the community. Obviously, that's really hard in the pandemic. And I, again, I am relatively new to the area, so I'm still meeting people and that, that is a weakness in my candidacy. I'm not going to lie. Um, and it's a perfectly reasonable reason not to pick me. But I think that it is possible to meet people and to reach out and to get public comment because it's not possible to be friends with the entirety of the city anyway. So it's always going to be an exercise in meeting people.
Councilmember O'Keane.
If appointed to the commission, would you be available to meet the first and third Tuesday evening of every month?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anastasia, what do we got? About three minutes left?
Three minutes, forty seconds.
Yes. Ms. Hendricks, do you have any questions for us?
Oh, wow. Um, I, is, is it appropriate for commissioners to reach out to citizens individually? To, to hear more concerns? Is it a bad idea?
I don't know that it's bad, it depends how you do it.
I'm so sorry.
If you're going after one person's ideas and at the expense of others, then no. But if you're doing it in a way that you're listening to everybody, then there's nothing wrong with reaching out. I mean, we do it ourselves at the beginning of meetings. When we used to meet together, we go out and talk to people in the audience. So yeah, I mean, I think it's fine. It just depends on how you do.
Okay. Um, I guess it's not exactly a question, but then I, I, I would say specifically that I again was surprised to be picked for an interview, given that I haven't lived too very long. Um, and I will stick around and remain engaged regardless of the outcome this evening.
Good. We need that. We need more of that. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, next person that we would like to hear from would be, uh, Mariel Metapoor.
Evening, everybody. Sorry, a little bit of a camera difficulty here.
That's fine. Uh, Councilmember Shrubnik, you're going to start this one off. Once we get Ms. Metapoor situated and ready to go. Are you ready? Wonderful. Councilmember Shrubnik, would you please do the first question?
You're unmuted.
You're muted.
It's, it's good to see Mariel. We know each other from, from work. So please, uh, please provide a two or three minute overview of why you believe you are a good candidate for the planning commission.
Thank you for the question and thank you also for the opportunity to meet and talk with all of you this evening. You know, I have over 20 years of experience in public health. Um, and in a good percentage of that, um, of those years, it's the work that I've been doing has been really focused in community engagement, but also looking at how the environment that we live in really affects either positively, negatively, or neutrally, the health and wellbeing of our community. So you've been really involved with public health efforts around, you know, community design. And, you know, what does it mean to improve access to healthy and affordable foods? So like healthy retail projects are working very closely with different stakeholders from community members to business owners to planning departments, you name it. And, you know, really of looking at what are those systemic changes that we can do again to assure that where residents work, live and learn are really going to be supportive of, of of, of making health equitable across the board. Because the unfortunate reality is that depending on what planning decisions are made and what policies are implemented, you're going to potentially see an inequitable outcomes for, for the community. And so, um, again, you know, it's been both my passion and my dedication as a public servant, but also as a private citizen to really look at assuring that our communities are reflective of the values and of the health of the members that reside within it.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mrs. Metapoor. What would you, what do you think are the most important land use and planning issues that a city should address in the next few years?
So as I, I mentioned actually my application, I think in part, you know, some of the challenges that the city of Kenmore is facing is really based on its success. It's a wonderful community. It's centrally located between Bellevue and Seattle, has beautiful green spaces and it's just, it's a really great community to be living in and working in. But at the same time, the challenge is, you know, we acknowledge the fact that, you know, we need to have increased in transportation access issues, you know, both public and private. Housing is always a challenge, you know, across our region, uh, but especially here in the city of Kenmore. And how do we develop businesses? How do we develop residences in a way that is going to balance out those needs of the individuals? But also to be able to take into account, you know, the, the beauty of our, of our, of our nature and to protect it, um, to make sure that, you know, housing is affordable and accessible for the average family or for the, you know, for individuals. And to really look at how do we increase the diversity of the businesses within our city in order to be able to, you know, provide opportunities for folks, but to also expand, you know, tax base for the city. And so, um, you know, just really thinking about that and, you know, how can we, how can we develop in a way that's smart? And how can we develop in a way that's efficient? And how can we develop in a way that is again holding to our values of preserving the natural environment? But also thinking in mind, um, you know, in the past, um, you know, we, there's, you know, a horrible history of inequities when it comes to planning and development, um, you know, within, you know, I'm not necessarily the city of Kenmore, but you know, you look in, in different jurisdictions and how redlining and other policies really affected the way that communities invited diversity within it. And, you know, how do we, moving forward in planning decisions, do we really make sure that equity is, is at the foundation of this issue, the decisions that are made in order to reduce disparities that we do see?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team? What techniques did you or the group use to reach a decision? And in hindsight, would you have done anything differently?
Well, I think teamwork should be my middle name because all the work that I do is involving teams. Everything from being on statewide task forces to Um, everything from being on statewide task forces to, uh, regional task forces like Deborah and I were on, um, for the development of our accountable community of health, um, with the various community advisory boards that I'm part of, um, and even now is working in the COVID response for our county. Um, and so there's different roles that I've, I've been in, um, everything from facilitator, um, to, you know, board member, um, to kind of the, kind of co-driver of different efforts. And depending on the role that you have is really kind of the, um, you know, some of the considerations that you have to make in order to achieve your goal. And I think, you know, one of the examples that I want to give in, from a, a planning perspective is from work that I did in California, uh, because I am a transplant from California, I've been living in Kenmore, uh, for over four years now with my family. Um, and the work that I was doing as the, uh, rector of community wellness for the health department that I was working in, um, we were working very closely with our county parks department, um, with various different, um, park improvement projects where we were working very closely, uh, with community residents, uh, with law enforcement, with different businesses, um, as well as with our environmental department, um, and, and other stakeholders in order to be able to create, um, you know, sustainable changes within the park environment that allowed for families to enjoy those spaces, um, where the, this, this had been, um, had been, uh, basically been used by, you know, uh, there was a lot of gang activity, there was homeless, um, homeless encampment, um, and so it was not necessarily a place that families felt safe, take their children in. And so really working together, um, you know, uh, coordinating the conversations with community and coming to decisions on, on, you know, what were the first steps that we were going to take. And there was a lot of distrust between residents, um, with, uh, you know, county officials, with law enforcement, and really building bridges and, you know, just really coming up with a plan on how we were all going to be working together, uh, to create the change that we were, um, that we were wanting to enact and, you know, being able to use, um, you know, uh, community development dollars in order to, um, you know, create sidewalks and, you know, make other improvements within the park. And so of just, you know, kind of really working together and, um, and coming to the decisions that we needed for each step of the plan, which, you know, from the very beginning started with what was a park improvement plan going to be. And so it's just, you know, just working together and giving voice to opinions, giving voice to, you know, ideas and just, you know, learning how to agree to disagree.
Thank you.
The planning commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the planning commission facilitate discussion and decision-making work towards resolution when conflicting, um, opinions are expressed? And there's a second part, how would you suggest the planning commission consider conflicting expressed during a public hearing?
Um, this is a really good question. I'll tackle the first part. Um, and so, you know, I think a lot of it comes with how are you inviting, uh, community members to come and express, um, their, you know, approval or their discontent or provide their feedback. So, you know, a lot of the work I see is happening even before you come into a public forum, right? How do you, um, how do you inform the community? How are you bringing them into a planning process? How are you, um, you know, keeping them up to date with, you know, every step of the process? And so, you know, once you do come into a public forum, you know, you have, uh, ground rules of how you're going to have respectful engagement. Um, I think passion is great. You want your residents to be passionate about the community that they live in. Um, but you also have to, you know, establish how are you going to have discourse that could be very lively or engaged, um, but that's going to be respectful of one another, you know, really holding to the values that you have as a community. Um, and with, you know, um, how, as a, um, handle conflict, you know, I think, again, it comes into, um, that preparation part beforehand, but, you know, when you are in, in discourse, and I've had to do this many times in facilitating, you know, community-wide conversations, again, is how are you laying the groundwork for those conversations? Um, and, you know, holding to the, the values and, and to the, um, expectations that you have for one another.
All right. Um, councilmember O'Keane.
If you are selected by the city council to be one of the seven members on the planning commission, you will be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure the planning commission recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and vision? Thank you.
Now, I think, again, you know, I want to go to, you know, everything that goes, um, that happens before you as a planning commission are going to be having conversations in public forums and, and, you know, making and developing recommendations. It's about working together with the city's planning team about how community engagement is going to be taking place. You know, what is going to work for the diverse, um, sectors of, of community that are represented within Kenmore? How are we, um, looking to inform them and, um, make sure that they're part of our process? We know that not everybody can, you know, attend meetings, and if they can't, you know, determining what is going to, um, be the best way to get their, their input and their engagement. You know, are, are materials translated? You know, when we have meetings, do we have interpretation available? If you actually have, you know, hopefully once we're, we're past COVID and you were actually meeting in person and having community engagement forums, you know, are we having food available for individuals? Do we also have childcare available for individuals so that they can be, you know, fully participatory in that process? Um, and, you know, I think, you know, really looking at who are those community stakeholders that if there are segments of our community that are very hard to reach, that they can help the city of Kenmore and us as a planning commission, um, to that, you know, those residents are engaged as well. And so, and, you know, I think it's just being extremely deliberate in how outreach is done and how, uh, we really invite again, community into participate in the process because that's what you want. You want engaged citizenry and, you know, we have to really look out, you know, inside the box, outside the box, around the box to, to figure out what might work, um, where we see that there, you know, there might be gaps in that outreach.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Would you be available to meet the first and third Tuesday evening of each month?
Yes, I would.
Um, Anastasia, how are we doing on time?
One minute and 50 seconds.
Great. So, do you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions. I just want to reiterate and, you know, give you all my thanks. Um, and, you know, even depending on the, you know, um, outcome, um, if I'm on the commission or not, pretty much like my predecessor just said, um, I'm going to continue to be engaged to the city, just as I always am.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Metapore.
Thank you.
Um, all right. Let's see, we have, um, Emily Burnham.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi, haven't seen you guys in a while.
Yeah, so, let's start with councilmember Fialm.
Ms. Burnham, please provide a two to three minute overview of why you believe you are a good candidate for the planning commission.
Sure. Um, thanks for, um, thanks for this opportunity. It's really exciting. Um, as you know, or have, maybe you've remembered, um, I've lived in Kenmore for over 20 years, um, and I've seen its evolution throughout this time. Um, I'm very interested in the future of Kenmore and very, uh, interested in the habitat conservancy of this. Uh, as, um, I lived abroad, I lived outside of the US for a while, and when I came back, uh, it gave me the opportunity to see these massive changes, um, both good and maybe some that, um, I was, uh, didn't, didn't like, but, um, and so I thought this would be a great opportunity for me to stand, uh, be the voice of those who are interested in, um, also, um, supporting habitat conservancy. I feel that Kenmore has a really unique character and a, um, a unique, uh, I see all these opportunities that could, um, support, um, building more of not just a canopy, but possibly a natural corridor. Um, and I know that I'm not alone, there's a lot of people in the community who feel the same way and just don't feel like they know how to go about having a voice or jumping in to getting involved or what to do to get involved. So I would like to help this part of the committee, the planning committee. And, um, I feel like I would bring a fresh perspective to standard issues that would increase the value of a budget, um, simply through the use of creative solutions and different angles. Um, I am big advocate of bringing the community involvement into decision-making and my 20 years of, uh, or 12 plus years of university education as an associate professor in graphic design, um, help this happen. And I'm not just, um, I'm not only just interested in the advocacy of the habitat conservancy, there's other things as well. Um, but I believe if I were selected as one of the members, I would put the more in the Kenmore Planning Committee.
All right, deputy mayor.
So what do you think are the most important land use and planning issues that the city should address in the next few years?
Um, I agree with, um, the first, uh, candidate, um, who said that, um, the, definitely we have this unique positioning on Lake Washington and it's, would be a shame to see, um, the quality of it diminish through overdevelopment. And so with that said, I, I believe that, um, a balance between the densification, urban densification and conservation of, of this great habitat that we already have, that not, uh, there's very few cities that have this, um, forested feel already and a, a lake and the Burt Gilman and all these opportunities to, um, to make sure it doesn't get, um, overdeveloped so fast. Um, I believe that there, you know, COVID has shown us that not only is it important to maintain existing parks, and for those of you who have like gone to the same park every day for the last nine months, it's great to have a park, I love it, and, but I would like to see more and bigger. And so maybe increase more of these spaces, take advantage of, of unused green spaces to create, um, that green corridor I was just talking about. Um, and this would dovetail nicely with the goal of reduction of carbon, um, in Kenmore's plan, future plan. Um, I'd like to, um, with the development, I, it would be awesome to see some sort of green building where the environment could be incorporated with these buildings, like rooftop greenery, vertical, um, green, um, plantings and some of those more, um, unique designed, uh, green buildings. Um, also the, the water, um, the way that it's, um, those green buildings, uh, deal with saving water for the building. I mean, that's something I have a keen interest in, um, but there's not enough time to go into all of that. Um, and also I really appreciate, this was, um, I love that Kenmore is the home of a few established trailer parks. Um, when I go on YouTube, I see all these tiny houses, they're so cool and they're small, they use very little space and they're affordable. So this might even be a great way to accomplish, um, a cool, uh, affordable housing in the form of another trailer park. Maybe it could be like a little higher end one and, you know, there's, when people hear of affordable housing, I think they immediately think of like future slum building or multi-unit dwellings. And I think there's creative ways around that to, to have all different kinds of, um, uh, buildings, the big, small, really small, tiny, maybe a tiny house on a bigger property, which would accomplish both the, um, green space and the affordable housing. And trail, I mean, maybe in, when I lived in California, they had these trails behind houses, these arroyos that were really, um, cool, that you could do something like that. Um, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team? And what techniques did you and/or the group use to reach a decision? In hindsight, would you have done anything differently?
Well, uh, I feel that having been a teacher in the university as an associate professor for 12 years, it's like an ongoing, a continual exercise in various team building. Um, inside of that, uh, inside of that position, I've also taken on a lot of community outreach activities that require delegations within groups. Um, I'm gonna go with the, um, more, most recent, most recently, I've been taking, um, a certification course on UX design, um, to build out my own, um, skillset in this design. And it is very research-heavy. Um, and one of the projects that we had to work on with a small group, um, was a project for the Puget Soundkeeper, which is a, um, conservation, Puget Sound Conservation Group that is a nonprofit. And they go around and make sure that, um, buildings and people and communities are involved and, um, that businesses or industries aren't polluting, and if they are, they take them to court, et cetera. Um, one of the problems they were having is that they had tremendous bounce back where people would get to their site and just be repelled by the amount of information, not that they weren't interested, but that it was just daunting. And so our group, we were a group of three, um, we had to figure out why this was, what to, what to do. And so, um, in this case, the way that we found out, um, that we divided the team was just through which aspect of this sleuthing did everybody want, which, which part did you want to be a part of? And so it was research, um, it was information architecture, user flows, uh, so basically finding out the information, um, of why people were, um, not interested in what, what made them leave the site before they even got into it and why. And so with that came with, um, one-on-one user interviews and surveys. Um, and this was all divided into our group per who was interested in these aspects. Um, in the end, we kind of all dovetailed nicely into doing a little bit of everything. Um, did I answer the question? I think I left out something. What was the second half of that question? What would I do differently?
Yes.
I don't, in this scenario, I mean, there's always, in reflection, there's always something you could have done more streamlined or, or more efficiently. Um, but in this case, we had a huge deadline, which, um, and, and I don't, it's, you know, in retrospect, in reflection, it's not realistic to say, uh, you don't know this until after you go through the process. Um, but there are things I would do, I just can't think of them now. I mean, to make it faster. Yeah.
All right. Councilmember O'Keane.
The planning commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the planning commission facilitate discussion and decision-making to work towards resolution when conflicting opinions are expressed? How would you suggest the planning commission consider conflicting opinions expressed during a public hearing? Thank you.
Um, well, with any communication, um, I think it's inevitable in this situation to hear differences of opinions and beliefs. Um, everybody comes from so many different backgrounds as, as is, um, similar to teaching, I, I taught in Saudi Arabia and I couldn't have been more different than, um, people who lived there. So I am completely familiar with how somebody can think they're saying one thing and really, it's not understood. And, and, um, so I would say with everything tactfulness and respectfulness and making sure everyone is heard. And my, uh, teaching, um, background, so many times there would be an introvert, introvert- And my, uh, teaching, um, background, so many times there would be an introvert, introverted student who was so quiet and I thought they were so on and not engaged and had nothing to say. And then all of a sudden, one day when asked directly, uh, they came up with the most amazing ideas and they had been engaged all the time. It was just, um, uh, the way that, that they were engaging was different than the way that other students were and you know, you have to take into account the introverts as well as the extroverts because they don't get a lot of, um, airtime. And so I would say that making, that's where making sure everybody's heard and I would, if there was, um, an issue that was controversial, um, and it came to a, in a block, like you couldn't move forward. I guess I would start dissecting it much like I do for the UX where I would start having, um, maybe have, uh, those who are, send out a survey, find out where those areas are. Where's the block coming from? What is it? Is it something else? Do, is it a misunderstanding? Is, um, is there a compromise? Is there, if you did A, would that resolve B? If there is no room for compromise, why, why is that? So I would need more information, more research and, um, and then I, I guess I would be directed towards what's best for the community and, um, yeah, I would, I guess surveys to find out where the pain points are is the best, um, solution. To find out, because otherwise you're just, everybody's just guessing or using their own, uh, what they want, what everybody personally wants instead of making, um, instead of finding out the solution.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anastasia, where are we on time?
One minute and 40 seconds.
Councilmember Shrebnik, we're obviously not going to have, I mean, Councilmember Marshall, we're not going to have time to this. We'll get through it. Councilmember Marshall.
Okay, uh, if you're selected by the city council to be one of the seven members on the planning commission, you'll be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure that the commission recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and visions?
Um, well, I would, again, I would like to know, I would like to know the thoughts and visions of the entire community and how else can you do that? You can do some of it through the meetings, um, through the, the bi-monthly meetings, but then, um, you know, again, maybe other research and educational workshops. I love workshops and I think that that would be a way of getting more of a show, more people to show up to, to get involved and to, to have a voice and know that what their suggestions are could make a difference. I think maybe a lot of people are resistant to come to the, this, the meetings, um, because they think that they don't, they're not, they won't, it doesn't matter what they think. So I would think I would zero in on those people who, like how to get more people to, to the meetings and find out why they don't. And also another, um, method of getting people this information, maybe some people are, um, can't get online or don't know how, or maybe there's an elderly community that is, doesn't know how to work the, what they need to work in order to get on and they're used to like the good old fashioned snail mail and they, um, uh, maybe a bulleted, the points distilled down into a bullet list on the newsletter in the back every month, the printed one. That could be a good way to get to a big group of, um, potential audience viewers.
Councilmember Shrebnik, I know yours is quick.
You.
I know you're going to ask me if I can attend the first and third and yes.
Yep, yep. Would you be available the first and third Tuesdays of each month?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you guys.
So we're halfway through. How about if we take five minutes or so? Everybody up for that? All right, let's go ahead and take a break for, uh, let's say, uh, seven minutes.
I'm here. Excuse me.
All right. No, no, you're fine. All right. Um, Miss Benazinski. Are you ready to go? Your mic on, you're ready? All right. Uh, Deputy Mayor. Start this out.
Yes, um, please provide a two to three minute overview of why you believe you're a good candidate for the planning commission.
Before I do that, I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Baker and council members, honorable council members for, um, having me interviewed tonight. It's a great honor. Thank you. Thank you for having me. And my path in life has taken a lot of twists and turns and I continue to carry parts of each of the experiences that I've had. Into who I am and how I move in the world today. Um, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. I, I think first and foremost, I, I'm here because I care very deeply about this place. And I didn't expect to end up in Kenmore. My family moved here four years ago. We actually almost bought a house in Burien, but it fell through and then the house in Kenmore found us and I can't, I, I feel like really the house did find us. And I'm so grateful that the house happened to be in Kenmore because I can't imagine living anywhere else now. Um, I feel very strongly about this place and very connected to this place and that's why I'm here. Um, I'm a lifelong learner. I think that's another thing that makes me a good candidate. Uh, my undergraduate and graduate degrees are in psychology. My specialty was, uh, my focus was social psychology. I did my dissertation on people's beliefs about the existence of white privilege. That was 20 years ago. So although I left academia, I was being trained to teach and do research in an academic setting. Um, I left the academy, but the value of, of social justice and equity has one that's stayed with me and is still important to me to this day, uh, something that I would carry into a role as a planning commissioner. Um, I really value and believe in community, community work and community processes and the power of multiple stakeholders coming together to make decisions that can move a community forward. I think that makes me a good candidate. Um, yeah, I believe in, I believe in us. I believe in the power of us and I, I believe in service and, uh, working together.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember O'Keane.
What do you think are the most important land?
Sorry, hold it. It's me.
That's I thought. I didn't want to correct you.
No, no, that's great. Um, what do you think the, are the most important land use and planning issues that the city should address in the next few years?
I think that we need to view, um, land use decisions, uh, any land use decision that comes before us through two lenses. And one is a climate and environmental sustainability lens, and the second is a social justice and equity lens. So those overarching are the, the two of the lenses that I think are going to be most important for us moving forward to evaluate any land use decision. And then more specifically, I think we need to bring housing justice and stability to economically vulnerable communities, uh, including providing affordable housing with an eye toward equity and inclusion. And I think we need to find ways to cultivate density in a responsible and sustainable way. With an eye toward high density development where it's appropriate, that has low density impact on the environment. As I understand, we need to, as part of the Growth Management Act, really concentrate our density, like Kenmore is one of the, the jurisdictions that needs to develop some high density housing, but I really think we need to be mindful about how we do that and make that sustainable. And try to, like I said, make that development low density impact wherever possible. Um, I think it's going to be really critical for us to address a changing climate, including continuing to aggressively reduce our carbon emissions as a city and increase our ability to store carbon. Um, I think, uh, we need to really move toward, from a standard of no net loss of ecological function to a standard of net gain as we think about land use and planning. I think for a long time we thought if we just don't lose any ecological function, our planet will sustain us. But I think we're seeing more and more that we need to think about how we can create more ecological function because we've lost, we've lost, I think, too much of it. Um, and I think Kenmore is in a really a good place to make things like that happen because we still do have so much wonderful, uh, open space and the ability perhaps to cultivate even more. Um, I think salmon recovery is going to be really important for Kenmore moving forward. I believe really strongly in salmon recovery. Because salmon need what people need. I care very much about salmon and the environment because what salmon need, uh, is what people need. We need clean, cold water. Kenmore is fortunate to have beautiful lakeshore and the Samamish River and Waltz and Swamp Creek. There are all tier one priority areas in the Riot Eight Salmon Recovery Board. Planning, we're really fortunate to have that land in our, our care. And I think if we can steward that in a way that's good for salmon, we'll be stewarding, stewarding it in a way that's, um, also good for people. Those are some of the issues that I think are important.
All right. Uh, now, Councilmember O'Keane.
Please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team? What techniques did you and/or the group use to reach a decision? And in hindsight, would you have done anything differently?
So I'm part of a team every day that my team member is my eight-year-old son. Um, and we work, we work collaboratively, um, to make decisions about how our day is going to be and, and so that I can help facilitate his, his growth and, and development. And this, this is a process, it's actually called collaborative problem solving that I use with him. Um, and it wasn't something that I knew about until I, I had him. Maybe he was three or so by the time I discovered it. But it's been a really invaluable tool to use in my, my house. Um, because when you're working as a team, you, sometimes you have different ideas about priorities, about concerns, and this is a method that allows us to, to both be heard and to move forward together, um, and, and developing solutions. And I bring it up here because I have found that it's also invaluable. In all relationships. So to work collaboratively, collaboratively to solve problems in all relationships, not just the relationship I have with my child, but relationships I have with friends and family members and colleagues. Um, it's a pro, a process that works really well and involves being committed to actively listening without judgment. Without trying to solve the problem right away so that both people can have their, uh, all people involved, all stakeholders can have their concerns heard. And then seeing if solutions develop out of the conversation about concerns. And oftentimes, solutions will naturally evolve out of just people being able to talk about what their concerns are. Um, and then if not, there can be a, a process of dialogue where you go back and forth and, and trying to figure out what, what will work, what, what will satisfy both people and their concerns. So I engage in this all the time, every day. It doesn't work when I am not, um, feeling empathy. So if I ever, it, the thing, thing that I would change when it doesn't work is my ability to sort of feel empathy for the person I'm talking to, my son in this case, or, or myself. And, and then move from there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Planning commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the commission facilitate discussion and decision-making to work towards resolution when conflicting opinions are expressed? How would you suggest the planning commission consider conflicting opinions expressed during a public hearing?
I think it's really important, um, that people feel like their concerns are important and, and valid and that there is space for them to be heard. Um, so as a, uh, I think the planning commission should be providing that space for people to, to feel heard. And, and validated in their concerns, regardless of what the topic is, even when it's a controversial topic where there might be disagreements. And I feel like it's important to hear, hear people maybe sometimes beyond, sometimes when things get heated, there's a certain, uh, heat comes with how people are expressing their opinions. And I think it'll be important to hear sort of hear beyond that to what people are actually saying. Um, and maybe in reflecting back to them too, to say like, this is what I hear you saying is this, did I get it right? And then give, give people a chance to, um, say yes, that's what I was saying, or no, this is what I really meant. So that we make sure that we're really, really understanding people. I think that's really important. I think that we need to, maybe if, if a really controversial issue came up in comments in a meeting, that might be a sign that we need to slow down. So that people have more opportunity to, to be heard. And so that there's more time for solutions to, to rise up to the surface. It, it just might be a, yeah, a sign that we need to kind of put on the brakes and slow down a little bit so that we can, uh, fully hear everyone and, and develop solutions.
All right, Councilmember Shrebnik.
Yeah, if, if you are selected by the city council to be one of the seven members of the planning commission, you'll be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure the planning commission recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and vision?
I think that again, listening and really valuing listening is going to be so, so important. Um, and the ability to, to sit with things, um, even if I didn't necessarily agree with them at first hearing to, just to be able to hold space for that and incorporate them into how I'm thinking about things will be so, super important. Um, having conversations with people in the community and, and developing community connections, I think will be important. A lot of these kinds of things happen organically if you're out and about and connected to the community. Like in my work at Wallace Swamp Creek Park, I've been able to have a lot of wonderful conversations with people when they're there clipping, um, blackberry canes that I might otherwise not have been able to have if I weren't involved in the community. So continuing to be involved in the community like that, I think will be important. Um, and let, letting people know that I am open and willing to listen will be important. Um, I think that the city does a really wonderful job with community outreach. I think the official channels that the city uses are really good and, and we should continue doing those things. Um, and additional community outreach, I think also is necessary and figuring out ways to meet community members where they are in ways that feel, um, authentic to, to their concerns and how, how they experience the world will be really important too. Um, I don't necessarily think that the city should absorb grassroots movements, but I think that there is something really vital about grassroots movements in our community, that, that people who are working on things are keying into things that are important and paying attention to what those grassroots efforts are. And reach, maybe reaching out to those, those, um, groups and communities would be a really good way to get different and more feedback about what we're doing in the, in the city.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Ms. Benazinski. If appointed to the commission, would you, would you be available to me on the first and third Tuesday evening of each month?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anastasia, how much time do we have left?
You have one minute and one second.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I just, again, thank you so much for this opportunity. I, I appreciate it.
We're glad you applied.
Thank you.
All right. Carlos Gill. Carlos, are you gonna?
I am there.
There we go. All right.
I am there.
I am there.
Wonderful. Please provide a two to three minute overview of why you believe you are a good candidate for the Planning Commission.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. And the reason that I applied is because, I mean, I have several reasons for having done so. And I think the biggest reason is that I've been around in Kenmore for a very long time. I came to Kenmore in 1957. And I lived from 1957 to 1960 up at the seminary. I I wasn't a seminarian, but I was the office clerk there. And I lived there while I attended Seattle University. So Kenmore at that time was just a crossroads. I might add that the the tavern on 68th there was already there and it's still there to this day. So I've seen Kenmore grow, then I went away in 1960, and then I came back in 1974. And I've been a resident constantly since 1974. And so like I wrote in my little answers to you folks, I've seen the city grow. I've seen the housing grows, especially around my house. I live up on the on the Snohomish border here. Across the street is Snohomish County. But all this area has just filled up with filled up houses and things that I've couldn't have imagined when I first arrived. So I'll tell you a little bit about me so that I can get to answering these questions. I, after I left in 1960, I joined the Foreign Service. I was, I worked for the Department of State. And the Department of State sent me to Latin America. I was a young cultural affairs officer in Latin America during the Cold War, when we were fighting communism in Central America and all that. And so in many ways, I say that because much of what I've learned through all these years was communicating and working with people who were culturally different from me and from my fellow workers, working in the embassies and so on. And so after that, I came back to Seattle and I came as a professor at the University of Washington. So I taught history, the history of Latin America, the history of inter American relations for 30 years up until the last day of 207. And I arrived in 1974 at the height of this political explosion that was going on at the university. And I was one of the reasons why the campus was exploding because I was one of the earliest ethnic non-white candidates at the university and especially in my Department of History. And so I'm very aware, very I've had a lot of experience in very difficult meetings with young people or people of any ages, basically, offering very controversial ideas, demanding very difficult answers that can't always be responded to. And so I've I've lived through all that. And so then I finally retired at the end of 2007. And right now, I'm I'm the president of a small publishing company, consulting and training company. And I'm also the president of a nonprofit company that offers educational services to prisoners at the Monroe Correctional Complex. And so those are all issues of social strife, social complexity, political complexity. And so I'm no, I'm no stranger to those issues. And I think in the end, as I look back on my own life, I think the major role that I've played, even when I have not wanted to, has been to bridge, to become a bridge. To bridge from where I'm at to where these other folks are at. And I think in the end, that's been my my life to this day. And so I can regarding planning issues, I've written and published a half a dozen books based on documents that I had to analyze and interpret and understand and apply to the issues that I was looking at. So I've done that a lot. And so I think that the planning that is involved, from what I've been listening over the last hour or so, and what I've read on your documents, these are issues that require a lot of analysis, a lot of sitting down and trying to find out what this idea really means in the end and trying to apply it to to the real condition that we're facing. And that's, and I think I can offer all of that. And lastly, two ideas that I can offer. I am a Latino, I am a Hispanic. Even when I didn't want to be, I was, you know, I had no choice but to do that. And I'm also a member of a very important demographic. I'm an old guy. And so I represent part of the community here in Kenmore of retirees who have been around for a long time. And I think I can sense their needs and because I sense them myself. And and so in many ways, I I feel that I bring those sensibilities that I think might help in the work that you folks do.
Councilmember O'Keefe.
I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. What do you think are the most important land use and planning issues that the city should address in the next few years?
Yes, well, I'm an old guy. Transportation for me is critical. I ride a bike, I walk, I drive. I wanted to be a motorcyclist as well. But I know that people my age, I live at the edge of the county. I've been a bus passenger for 20, 30 years. And so I know that for people my age, if they can't drive anymore because of their condition, transportation, getting around to community services, getting around to the bus services that's connects us all the way to downtown, those are very important issues. Housing, all these houses that have risen up around us. My children can't afford housing anymore. The prices are too high. And so what can the City Council, what can the city do about controlling prices for the younger generations? Those are big issues, too. We live in a very beautiful area endowed with natural resources, trees, water, the lake, the rivers, the brooks that bubble next to my house here. All of those are precious things. And I wish young people like my own children could afford to come in here. And they can't. They had to look for houses way out on the edges of the city. And so those are, those are issues that that you know, we all face. Issues of the environment, for example, rubbish collection, waste removal, what happens to all this kind of stuff that we throw out? What does the city do about those things? Those are all very, very important considerations that at least bombard my own head. I don't know whether they affect other people, but they certainly come to my mind all the time, lots of issues, lots of issues.
We're down to about five minutes left. Councilmember Marshall.
Please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team? What techniques did you or the group use to reach a decision? In hindsight, would you have done anything differently?
Yes, yeah, that's a good question. I've been hearing it over and over. When I went to Latin America, I had to deal with people who didn't see things my way. And when I came to the University of Washington, I came in the middle of those political storms that I mentioned to you. And I think bottom line that for me, in those many moments of very difficult stresses, bottom line was to listen, to listen to what the other people were saying, even if they were screaming at me or at my group, which they did many times. But you, in the end, you have to listen, you have to show empathy. And you, I I think I did some training, I did a lot of training with I was part of a training team and we did a lot of training with federal employees back in DC and in Mexico City and in Guatemala City and so on. And in the end, one of the key procedures that we always followed was to do a needs assessment. What did these people need in the situation that was confronting us? And so we did needs assessments in different ways, okay? You can do small groups, you can do individual groups, you can do polling, you can do all kinds of things. And so if the if the community has a sense that you've reached out to try to understand what what the hurt is, what the what the pressures are in the community, and they know that you understand them, then that in many ways helps. Even though in the end, you cannot please everybody, you simply cannot do that. And I know that very well. But in the end, to answer your question, Mr. Marshall, it's listening, doing needs assessments of a variety of sorts.
Cindy Clark, how much time do we have left?
A minute and 56 seconds.
Councilmember Shrebnik.
Okay, the Planning Commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the Planning Commission facilitate discussion and decision making to work toward resolution when conflicting opinions are expressed? How would you suggest the Planning Commission consider conflicting opinions that are expressed during a public hearing?
Well, I I think I've I've already answered the question. It's important to to listen. It's important to show that you're listening. And it's important to pick up and absorb some of the information that is being offered to you and to show that you're considering that information. But in the end, it's transparency as much as possible. Sometimes you can't do it totally, you can't do it completely. I understand that very well. But in the end, it's it's showing compassion and listening and doing as much as possible to show honesty in the end, in a way that you're making the decision. I think that's about all I can say.
Anastasia, please try to let me know when the time is up so we can stay on track here.
We have 10 seconds.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think we're going to get this in in 10 seconds, but Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. If you are selected by the City Council to be one of the seven members on the Planning Commission, you will be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure the Planning Commission recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and visions?
That's a hard question because I don't think there's an easy answer. And of course, the answer, I think, in part depends on how the City Council itself or how the city government has in the past reached out. So I would have to find out what that has been in the past to see if there's any new way of reaching out to perhaps parts of the community that may not have been that may have been overlooked and may have been not comprehended sufficiently. And so that's the only answer that I can come up with at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Councilmember Deputy Mayor Herbig, I know we can get your question in.
If appointed to the Commission, will you be available to meet the first and third Tuesday evening of each month?
I would make space.
Thank you.
And thank, thank you all for having me, okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Gill. All right. Next one is Dwight Thompson. Mr. Thompson, please.
Let's see, did I, oh, there's my video. Hey.
Hey.
Hi.
All right, how you doing?
I'm doing good. Thank you, it's an honor to be here and thank your honor and all the council members for allowing me to have an interview.
Councilmember O'Keefe, you want to start it off again?
Please provide a two or a three minute overview of why you believe you are a good candidate for the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Keefe. Well, first of all, I have a broad understanding of the planning system from serving on the Puget Sound Regional Council when we adopted the Vision 2040, all the way through down to this being on a city council, having to implement it. And that would also include looking at the the North King County area and watching Kenmore incorporate and go through the struggles that it has gone through and quite admirably, I would say. The other thing is that I understand the need and and the concept of what we are constrained as in Kenmore as being identified as a larger city and a center in the Growth Management Acts and the regional planning requirements. So that really puts us in a in a position where, and I'll speak to that later in your questions, of having to do a quite a interesting balancing act. You know, we've remodeled our home here to to live an age and place. And so Kenmore is going to be my home until I get put in the ground someday. And I I want it to be a place that's really livable. I own a house here. I I also own commercial property. I have a former apartment owner. I have a vacation rental. And I have actual rental property. So I can see and feel the pains of all of these different needs that are coming to play here in Kenmore and with the City Council and the City Planning Commission. So in short, that's what, that with my other experience, which you can see on my application, would make me a good candidate.
Thank you. Councilmember Marshall.
What do you think of the most? What do you think of the most important land use and planning issues the city should address in the next few years?
My view is, first of all, what is livability? What, how do the residents of Kenmore view livability? Is it, um, um, an issue of environment? Which I believe personally it is. Water quality, um, land use priorities, uh, stream, uh, clear streams, um, the shoreline, um, how you're gonna, how we are going to do. Uh, but you're gonna ultimately decide how, uh, the developments are going to happen down on, uh, the waterfront, uh, what happens with the cement factory, all of those types of things. Um, those are important. Density versus affordability, like I said in my opening statement. The designation of being a center in the King County, uh, uh, planning document and a larger city in the, uh, 2040 document, kind of puts us in a place where we have to have, take a little more density and more business growth and, and figure out how to actually make that happen without destroying the livability that our residents desire and want in our city. Ultimately, you folks are the ones who make that decision. You're elected to do that. My job, if I was appointed to the Planning Commission, is to try to make your job a little easier. And I will address some of that in the oncoming questions. So, um, and lastly, you, we have a lack of buildable space, um, without giving up our green space. How are we going to do that? How is that, how do we balance all of that, the streams and, and the setbacks? The canopy, all of those things. Those are really important issues of livability. And, and it's a struggle. It's a struggle. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team and what techniques did you and/or the group use to reach a decision? In hindsight, would you have done anything differently?
I've had multiple experiences on teams. From my, uh, time in the military, and a lot of you see that I'm a retired colonel, but that doesn't mean I make the decisions. My staff does staff work. Staff, we do, you know, the military is famous for, for working as a team to develop answers and a way forward. When we do military plans, we do several courses of action. And we go on the pluses and the minuses and all of that stuff. And as a commander, one of my responsibilities was making sure that all options were on the table and that they were adequately staffed and briefed to those who had to make the decisions. Uh, I, uh, own a company in workers' compensation and vocational rehab and return to work. I have been intimately involved, in fact, a- actually having to go to court on some issues with regard to the actual administration of workers' comp law and, uh, both lobbying, uh, the, your legislators, our legislators, as well as, uh, uh, working with, uh, and being appointed to committees at the state level, um, as a representative of the vocational rehab community to develop policy, both from a, a perspective of, of, uh, operation as well as perspective of injured workers and employers. Balancing the ball. If any of you know about workers' comp, it is one of the most, left and right issues when it comes to, uh, state policy. In Lake Forest Park, Shoreline Management Act was a major issue. We had to delay that for over a year so that we could come to an agreement of parties and an understanding of what was really necessary for the environment, which balanced the needs of the, of, and, and Lake Forest Park was homeowners. In, in, in Kenmore, you have just gigantic issues with regard to the cement plant, um, the, uh, air, uh, you're the largest seaplane port in America. Plus, all, uh, and the slough. You have all kinds of issues that are just very, very difficult. Burke Gilman Trail, I can tell you stories about the redevelopment. And I think, uh, Mayor Baker could, uh, was around when that went on, and that was a nightmare. And I worked very hard because I believe that for the good of the people, that a recreational trail needed to be developed. And finally, um, the environment with regard to, one of the things that I worked very, very hard on is tree canopy and, um, insensitive areas ordinances and keep bringing people together to get a unanimous, um, approval of ordinances that set us in the right direction.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. The Planning Commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the Planning Commission facilitate discussion and decision-making to work towards resolution when conflicting opinions are expressed? And how would you suggest the Planning Commission consider conflicting opinions expressed during public hearing?
Let me address the last issue first. How do you address issues in public hearings? Public hearings are there for listening, not to taking on the public. You have to listen. You have to hear people out, all the way out. You don't, you, you don't second guess them, you don't ask them a bunch of questions suggesting they, that, uh, either you're a pro or a con or, you know, like them. Anytime you start asking questions or you don't listen to the people during public hearing, in my view, it's a mistake because that's what a public hearing is for. Open houses, on the other hand, are an opportunity where you can actually, talk with people, exchange ideas. It's a more informal perspective, maybe more structured. I think that, um, the way to deal with controversial issues is process. You've gotta do early process, significant outreach in all aspects. Kenmore, the city of Kenmore is excellent at doing, um, uh, their, the media, the outreach. I think that they really, you, uh, you are really doing a good job. But when you come up with some like, uh, very controversial issues and this density deal that we're gonna have to do, to, to develop, it's going to take significant outreach, early outreach. So I think that also that we should consider sustainment, uh, I mean, uh, developing task forces for special, special items that need further development. And, and, um, and identify when people of adverse or, um, different new views speak. Try to understand their core issue. And if you have to speak to them afterwards, uh, outside of the meeting to figure that out, that's what I feel as a planning commissioner, my responsibility is to do.
Herbig.
If you are selected by the city council to be one of the seven members on the Planning Commission, you'll be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure the Planning Commission's recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and vision?
Well, it, it's not going to represent the entire community. What it will represent is the best position that we would be able to balance the needs of the entire community. And I think that there's a couple things that can be done. One is that if there is a significant issue that is not seem to be resolved or that people feel uncomfortable with the outcome, then I believe that, um, that should be addressed in a minor, in a, fully addressed in a minority report on the issue to you as the council. So that it's clearly stated that this is an area of concern that should be considered in your final, this, uh, action on whatever is the recommendation. And the other item I, is that I think we have to have very careful selection of contractors and that process that we, that you have authorized for such a, uh, issue when it comes to developing policy and, um, and, and the whole, uh, research of the, of the, what the Planning Commission has to do.
If appointed to the commission, would you be available to meet on the first and third Tuesday evening of each, uh, month?
It would be an honor.
Anastasia, how much time do we have left?
One minute and twenty-five seconds.
Do you have any, uh, questions for us, Mr. Thompson?
No, I just wanted to say, um, uh, I'm pleased that you chose me to, to speak. And, and I, and I want you all to know that I, my, um, belief in what you folks have been doing over here is, is, um, really admirable. It's just like you, I, you did the right thing when you decided to get that bridge done fast. You know, those types of, those were good decisions and you thought about it, didn't think about it too long, but you, you, you listened to folks and you made that decision. And those are the kinds of things that I think that, um, you're, you're looking to ma- make good decisions for the future. And I, I would like to be a part of that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Last person. John Culver.
Hello. Good evening, council. Great to see everyone.
All right. Councilmember Marshall, how about you starting this one off?
Very good. Uh, Mr. Culver, please provide a two-to-three-minute overview of why I believe you're a good candidate for the Planning Commission.
Sure. Uh, my name is John Culver. I'm a dad, I'm a millennial, I'm a renter, uh, and I'm a technologist. Uh, so I build a lot of tools sort of in the political and civic space. Uh, and I say to help people better sort of understand and exercise their, uh, civic and sort of democratic, lowercase d, lowercase d, uh, agency. Um, there's, there's a lot of magic that sort of happens, uh, especially at a local level and helping people get engaged and feel like they understand the systems and can kind of meaningfully participate. And, you know, a lot of what I'm hearing tonight is like, there's, there's an enormous opportunity to make sure that, you know, all of that engagement is happening, kind of at that wonky local level. Uh, so a lot of what I do is, is sort of organizing centric. Uh, I would love to bring those skills to the Planning Commission. Uh, more about me, I've lived in the Lake Forest Park and Kenmore area for the better part of about six years. Uh, I've served on the PTA over at Lake Forest Park Elementary as their legislative co-chair and have served on a number of other boards relating to, uh, political sort of things. Uh, so, yeah.
Um, all right, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Okay. What do you think are the most important land use and planning issues that the city should address in the next few years?
Absolutely. Uh, the biggest one has to be affordable housing. Uh, we have an obligation to our residents to make sure that everyone can afford to live here and to stay here. And that's one that I take, uh, incredibly seriously. Uh, the other one would be environment. Uh, we also have an incredible responsibility and really an obligation, uh, to make sure that we're being good stewards, uh, to the environment around us. We are blessed with all this natural beauty, with the, the lakefront and the slough and the rivers and all this, uh, natural wonder. Uh, so we need to make sure that we take care of that and we need to make sure that, uh, our policies reflect those priorities.
Uh, Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Please provide an example of a teamwork experience where reaching a decision was an important goal. What was your role on the team? And what techniques did you and/or the group use to reach a decision? And in hindsight, would you have done anything differently?
Sure. So this is a contentious one, admittedly. Uh, I was in the middle of a couple friends who were in a very messy and increasingly public feud. There was sort of escalating tension on both sides, accusations of things that they shouldn't have done, uh, really going back and forth and turning into the sort of this, you know, increasingly nasty sort of us-first-them sort of thing. And, uh, I, unbeknownst to me, sort of got thrown in to try to mediate it, uh, to try to resolve these two factions, as it were, and try to pull people together. Uh, it was not easy. You know, I was, I was in a position where I sort of saw both sides of it. I, you know, perfectly understood. I, I considered them both friends and I said, I, you know, I get it. How do we, how do we come together? How do we resolve this? And what I found is kind of the, the path forward for us, when we sort of isolated everybody, you know, separate from the public and, and the chatter and, and some of the, the heat there, you know, and just got them in a, in a room and kind of talked it out and really understood, you know, their concerns, they didn't want a big messy thing. They sort of got thrust into it based on all of this outside noise and agitation and activity. And I think people were coming from a good place, but it, it's, was very instructive for me of how quickly things can escalate and how, you know, es- especially when things are kind of going sideways, like you really gotta listen and you really gotta dig in. And, you know, I guess more than anything, like you really have to see the humanity in one another. Like you really gotta dig deep when things are tough and say, okay, you know, what, what are your priorities? I wanna make sure that I'm still hearing you and respecting you and honoring you and, and sort of where you're coming from, uh, so we can try to, to work it out. Uh, and eventually, uh, my gosh, we did it. So it's, uh, more than I expected, uh, but was happy to be involved in kind of helping them de-escalate and, and smooth things over. So that was great. Um, in terms of things I would have done differently, it's tricky because like it, you have to sort of give people space to say their piece and to kind of, you know, get off their chest and speak their truth and, and, you know, um, say what they feel like they need to say. But in, in the course of this thing, sort of as it was escalating, like, uh, a lot of that was just contributing to that tension, you know? It's like, you know, like, good and great, I guess, you know, that you sort of got your, your say out there, but like that, that ended up contributing, you know, in all these other sort of cascading ways. So, you know, maybe getting involved a little sooner, there's kind of a delicate, you know, tension or push-pull there to, to make sure you're not, you know, stifling meaningful conversation. But I think getting involved sooner instead of sort of being thrust into it by the time it had sort of exploded, you know, might have been able to smooth that out a little sooner. Uh, so that's something I would have done differently.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So, um, the Planning Commission may be discussing controversial issues. How would you suggest the Planning Commission facilitate discussion and decision-making to work towards resolution when conflict, when conflicting opinions are expressed? And how would you suggest the Planning Commission consider, uh, conflicting opinions expressed during public hearings?
Absolutely. Uh, courageous conversations are incredibly crucial, you know? They, they move the world forward, they, they help us get unstuck and find a path forward. Um, it really goes back to sort of like I said, you know, seeing the humanity in one another and making sure that you have sort of a, a clear-eyed understanding of people's constraints and their needs and how we can meaningfully address them through vehicles like the Planning Commission. It's a lot of listening, it's a lot of really sort of digging deep and, you know, like, well, what, what does that mean? How can we make this all work? And sort of looking at, you know, the constraints in kind of their barest ways so that people can separate a little bit from what they might think is a, you know, a preconceived perfect solution and start to look at, well, how do we work all this together? Because even, even in cases where it's like, well, we have to go with one plan or another, like you've still got the people on the, you know, the quote-unquote, you know, the other side that didn't get their way. And it's like, you, we're still neighbors, you know? We still, we still have to work together. We can't, you, you don't, you don't get to just, you know, discount that. You have to work together. So, um, that's what I would say there. Uh, in terms of how to get in front of it with, with things like public comments, um, public comment is a great vessel, as others have said, you know, it's, it's, certainly brings out, you know, passionate opinion sometimes. Uh, I like what others said, you know, it was similar to the, the civic engagement thing of sort of reaching out to people proactively. If we know something's gonna be, you know, contentious, like, hey, let's, let's get in front of this. Let's make sure that we sort of understand, you know, how we've tried to address your concerns and, uh, sort of doing our due diligence there. Um, and especially where that comes into, you know, conversations of inclusivity and diversity. Like you really gotta be intentional and, and reach out to people. It, it, if you're sort of relying on it happening, I, I think we've seen enough examples, you know, it tends to not. So you, you've really gotta be deliberate in that, uh, to make it happen. So, yeah. Thank you.
If you are selected by the city council to be one of, uh, the seven members on the Planning Commission, you will be appointed to represent the entire community. How will you ensure the Planning Commission recommendations will represent the entire community's thoughts and vision?
Absolutely. Uh, I think some of that goes back to, like I said, making sure that we're actively engaging with our constituents Absolutely. I think some of that goes back to, like I said, making sure that we're actively engaging with our constituents and with our residents and sort of an ongoing basis. That seems like a great way to sort of get in front of any surprises and make sure that they feel like that they're brought to the table, their concerns are heard, et cetera. And and some of that, just in terms of me, you know, just comes down to life experience, you know, being being a renter, being a millennial, being in a demographic that's more likely to move and to be affected by decisions like that. You know, it it makes up a large portion of Kenmore and, you know, would love to see that representation on the planning commission. And that's something that I bring to the table and is incredibly important.
Councilmember O'Kane.
If appointed to the commission, would you be available to meet the first and third Tuesday evening of each month?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anastasia, how much time do we have left?
We're moving at warp speed. We have five minutes and 55 seconds left.
Excellent.
We are moving at warp speed. All right. Any questions you have for us?
Yeah, if we got a minute, we can make it quick maybe, but I I would love to hear, if it's possible, we could go around everyone on the council's wish list. If you if you had a pet project you really want to get done, fully paid for, fully funded, everyone's on board, just sort of blue sky, you know, what would that be? What would you want to see?
Councilmember O'Kane.
My my blue sky, everything that if I could have my wish list, it would be a full restoration of Lake Point. Turn it into a park with community space, ball fields, location for the electric dock, ferry terminal. But habitat restoration for salmon included in that, but make it a space for all of Kenmore. Completely restored. Throw in a swimming pool if we have space, but that's that's exactly what I want. A beautiful community space, a destination for people to come, maybe an amphitheater too. But a full restoration, completely letting, you know, no, no industry in on the lake. That's my pie in the sky vision. I mean, that's a dream. I could say that.
Thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
A public pool, Mr. Culver, so that our children can learn to swim again as they once did. And then short of that, fixing up the sidewalks on 61st.
Great. Councilmember Shrubnik.
I'd have to go with Lake Point. Councilmember O'Kane and I might have slightly different variants on what that would look like, but pretty close.
Nice.
Councilmember File.
You know, I, my vision closely matches that of Councilmember O'Kane. I have to be honest. I dream of a renovated Lake Point and restored beautifully so. And safe, connected, multi routes of transportation, and that would include the the green ferry, a walk-on ferry. But to to wrap that up with a big, beautiful boho, it'd be great to have, you know, a ball field and an aquatic center and a cultural recreation center for our community. Because we need places where our community can come together and celebrate and have joy, find the fun in Kenmore. That's the important part, find the fun in Kenmore. So that's that's where my my big hopes and dreams are. And if we could have a clean and clearer lakefront point, that would be part of the dream.
Awesome.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, Lake Point, that's that's kind of the big, that is the big thing for 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 Kenmore, I think. And, you know, part of what I really want to see with Lake Point, you know, I want to see the trail, you know, from Burke Gilmour get extended around the peninsula in the setback. And eventually, you know, maybe go under the bridge and go all the way to to Squires, you know, I want to see that sort of riverwalk at some point. But that that's a bigger dream because there's a lot of properties you got to deal with going up the river. But but yeah, Lake Point is the big get, I think, for me.
Nice.
Affordable housing down to the 30% level along the 522 corridor.
There we go.
Thank you very much. So you want to jump right into the next one or you want to take five? Because we've got a decision to make here. Five. I'm seeing five. Let's hold it to five because we got to make a decision on three people and then we've got one more item on our agenda tonight. To get their cameras back on. All right. So we've heard eight people answer our questions and tell us why they would be a good fit for the planning commission. How do we want to go through this? Do we want to submit names and see if we can get it from there? Submit names to the clerk. But we have a city attorney here who's going to keep us honest. Councilmember File.
Just a point of clarification. It would be nice to know, do you just want a slate of three or four? How do you want to work this through?
I think we're trying to figure that out.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
I'm trying to remember how we did this in the past.
Yeah, I know.
I think there's like a whiteboard maybe and.
Yeah, and but in the past, I don't know that, did we do an open session or were we discussing qualifications under exec session?
No, we were just in the back. We 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 were just in the back room, but it was open to the public if they wanted to come in.
Yeah, I just don't remember.
Because we can't do planning commission and then exec, so.
We need to narrow the eight down. I know that we have ones that impressed us with the interview. And the city attorney is there, I know. I saw her briefly. There she is. So can we submit four names to the clerk? Or do we need to keep it all verbal on video?
I think you need to keep it on video. And the only concern I have, it's almost as if it was a secret slate. I'm not very, I don't know. I mean, if you can give her names and, you know, she has a whiteboard or someone, you know, keeps the tally, if that's what you need. But, you know, I I'm, we just need to avoid the look of confidential because it's not.
Well, the city manager's got a great whiteboard, but the question is, is he in this office? Councilmember O'Kane.
I was just thinking, I'm not the full bet. Am I muted?
No, you're not. You're fine.
There's a part of me that feels like we may have one or two count, one, at least one. There's one that I feel like I I'm pretty sure the council would probably like to move forward on. So if we were to bring that up and maybe narrow it down, I don't know that we'd need a whiteboard necessarily. But for us to have some discussion about our best, who who were our top men, I because I can, I could say, I think it's okay to say this. I feel that it would be okay, city attorney, Ms. Ray Tan, to say. So I would say that I definitely want to move. I'll just put my, I'll put too strong and then I'm going to give Nathan Luchus, I believe, as a standing planning commissioner, has performed. And we we have, we know what we're getting at the table there. He is bringing youth and vision. And I thought he did an outstanding job in his interview. So now that's that's one candidate that I I know I want to bring forward. I also, and I can pass.
Luchus?
Yeah.
Are we all pretty much in agreement with Nathan Luchus? And I need to see nodding heads. I need to see something, a thumbs up.
Are we in executive session or are we?
No, we can't. We we can't do a public planning commission and then exec.
Wide open. So I'm sure.
Always used to. I, he was in my top three. Now he's not, but I mean, I I adore him. So, I mean, I think he's a great planning commissioner.
So I see three so far. I see three. Is there a fourth here for Nathan? The tie is not going to get it. There needs to be a clear four. Okay, we don't have, we don't have a four. So let's go on with another name. Councilmember O'Kane, you had another one.
I would bring forward Tracy Benaszynski. I thought she put forth a strong interview and upheld our city's values. And we also have, anyway, I I put forth Tracy Benaszynski.
So do I see four up for Tracy? Okay, we got Tracy. One down, two more. Let's hear another name.
I can let's let someone else.
I feel like there's got to be a better way to do this because.
I'm hoping for it.
I mean, I was. Suggestion. And you might, you might not want to do this, but it might be useful to vet out the ones that you agree on the most. If everybody went around and contributed their top three. If there's unanimous consent around some individuals, say, five, six votes, then those are pretty locked in. And then you can move to discuss the ones that have remaining votes. Because in this instance, almost like you can get, it's who gets called in order first, you can gather the votes.
You're right. So who is your other name?
From me?
Councilmember O'Kane. Yeah.
This is the hardest one. If I were to take three, I bet I will throw. Oh, I I I I really have a hard time on this one, so I'd really prefer someone else to take the lead because there are three that I have next. They're tied, I had a tie.
I'll propose a couple. I I'll put forward Carlos.
Okay. Carlos and another name? No, we're not doing that.
Oh, we're not. Okay. Oh, okay. Mariel.
Mariel, okay. So you you had a couple names, three names?
What, Mayor Baker, I do have one more that I I that would complete my three that I thought rose to the top, Dwight Thompson.
Great. Councilmember Marshall.
The same as councilmember Shrubnik. And then it would be Mr. Thompson.
All right. Councilmember File.
This is where I might differ just a little bit. So Tracy Benaszynski, John Culver, Dwight Thompson. I'd even throw Rose Hendrickson in there. For me, she's very tied to Tracy Benaszynski.
All right. So is that Tracy Benaszynski?
I'm in a tie between Tracy Benaszynski and Rose Hendrickson. I I'm feeling very torn between the two.
Trying to get away from. Anybody else? I know I want, I would like to see Dwight Thompson. I'd like to see Nathan Luchus. And I would like to see Mariel Metropore. All right. So we've got.
Gets to go, I think.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Herbig.
This is rough. This is really rough. After the interviews, I think I'd want to go with Tracy, Rose, and Carlos. Well, wait, keep for, but Nathan was in there too. Sorry, this is, this is a tough list. Okay, Tracy, Nathan, and Carlos. That's tough.
And councilmember Shrubnik, I have top two, Carlos Gill and Mariel, or A two. Do you have an additional one?
Tracy was my third.
Okay. Let me see what's the most consistent.
And and Anastasia, I can give you my slate because I didn't put them in in order. Oh, am I muted? Oh, I apologize if I'm being disorderly here. What I was going to say is my order, if Nathan Luchus weren't to reach four, which it didn't sound like, my my slate would be Tracy Benaszynski, Mariel, and Dwight Thompson.
Is that your final answer?
That is my final answer. It's.
All right.
I mean, for me, I mean, I can, I mean, I can vote. I haven't, I'm a team player. So, you know.
But I think we go with our top three.
That was my top three.
Yeah, I I I don't think, I I would argue that eliminating Nathan, just because we didn't get three, four thumbs up right now, before we kind of got fell into a system, makes a whole lot of sense. So I would, if he's in your top three, Councilmember O'Kane, I would put him in there and then add your other two.
Yeah, it was tough, honestly. This this is, this was really, I have a tie for the number three. So I'd like to hear, plus, is it, I'd like to hear, I'd like us to talk about what makes our candidates stand out, those that need discussion. I think that would be really valuable. So.
Another agenda item to go. And we can sit and spend 15 minutes discussing each person again. We just kind of did that. So I'm all for discussing a little bit. I just don't want to get carried away because we need to make decisions and and move on. So anybody want to say anything about any one of the candidates?
I'd like to hear from Anastasia how we're doing.
I think the top two, you have four votes or sort of the most consistent ones so far are Dwight Thompson and Tracy Benaszynski. But I'm still tallying. So those are the ones that are most consistent right now.
I'd be happy to give two comments, one on Mariel, what stood out to me for her, and one on Nathan, what stood out for him. I think I always expressed why I liked Nathan. I thought his vision and proven performance is what stands out for him. I thought Mariel's experience was great.
I'm confused. You took him off the list.
No, and well, I said, I said, if we were to, if I were, if we were, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Herbig mentioned, we haven't. I I didn't, I was. I think he was still someone on the list for some people. So I could say, I think he has proven performance and that's why I put him forward. And I I personally like his vision and I had a sense that it was unanimous, in which it wasn't. So I, that's why I brought him forward upfront. I did think that Mariel stood out. I think her public health record, her involvement, what she brought forward, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at her resume right now, but I felt like she brought a planning mindset that would be a very strong benefit to this, the city of Kenmore.
All right. Any other comments? Again, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I think I don't, I can't think of any time in our history where we haven't reappointed a planning commissioner who wanted to continue to serve the city. Yeah, I think Nathan has stepped up, has done an admirable job and deserves to get reappointed. I understand that, you know, we, for some reason, this year round, got an amazing slate of folks who were interested. And it made the decision very tough, but I don't see any reason to not appoint Commissioner Luchus. And I would also say that I think Rose was a really interesting candidate in her, that engineering background and analytical background, I think, could bring a very interesting approach to our planning commission and interesting perspective.
Yeah, and don't, don't forget that the people that aren't chosen tonight, there's a very strong group here. And I would hope that we would keep them on the list as replacements as people drop off. I mean, that's what we've done in the past. And there's some very talented people here, so.
Do you want an update?
Yeah, but I want to hear from Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. So I just want to speak real quickly to, you know, the people I selected and then also why I didn't select the few that I thought I was going to be pulling for. So, and really, the responses were the preparedness, being ready and able to be nimble and flex and flow quickly on the spot. Every one of them had amazing resumes, everyone. And so what was very attractive in the way of, you know, the ability to work together, communicate effectively, cleanly, efficiently. Yeah. Right away to me, that was, you know, a toss up between, a tie between really Tracy Benaszynski and Rose Hendrickson. Absolutely a solid for me for John Culver and Dwight Thompson. We saw those efficiencies. Nathan, I absolutely adore him. He's amazing on the planning commission. But this time, we have just an incredible low opportunity of people who are ready to serve. And there were wow factors for me. And I'm looking into those. What I did not see in Ms. Metapore was that quickness, nibbleness that I would want to see. I did not also see that in Mr. Gill. I wanted to see that. And so that's why I picked the slate I did. Those efficiencies are really important to working together in the moment and being effective team members.
All right, Anastasia, where are we at?
Sure. So I'm just going to speak in terms of where we found the most consistency among the council. You have obviously a lot of incredible candidates and some overlap, but it sounds like most consistent are Dwight Thomas, or Thompson, and Tracy Benazinski. And then with three each are tied are Mariel Metapore and Nathan Lutzes. And then the final least consistent would be Carlos Gill and John Culver. And Rose Hendricks.
All right. So Dwight Thompson was one and the other, who was the other?
Tracy Benazinski.
Tracy, okay.
So we have two out of the three positions then, right?
Pardon?
We have two out of the three positions.
Yeah, we do.
And then the, the next group was, remind us.
It's tied. It's between Mariel Metapore and Nathan Lutzes.
Right, okay. And that frankly, I'll speak since I haven't, that was where my brain was at. I came in with Nathan for sure. And, and I'm trying not to be biased. I do know Mariel in another context. And, but, you know, I thought she did a great, she brings a lot to the table. But I also recognize Deputy Mayor Herbig's position and I concur that, you know, he's done a fantastic, Nathan's done a fantastic job on the planning commission. So I, you know, I'm, I was very hesitant. It's like, oh, can't I pick four? But yeah, so I was, I was actually vacillating between those two. So I think they, I am fine with however this goes and I would be, you know, delighted with either. So.
And may I speak, Mayor? I apologize for being, jumping in. I, I was, I'm in the same position as Councilmember Shrubnik. I think both are outstanding candidates. Councilmember Shrubnik's experience with Mariel makes me feel strongly that she'd be a great candidate. I was, I think both, I can, I'm happy with both candidates. If someone has a strong, I can, and they're both bringing something that's important to the table. Youth and an additional, you know, we have more diversity on the other side. So they're, they're both bringing something to the table that I think is important to have on the council and it makes it a very hard decision for me.
So I'm with Deputy Mayor in that we've not turned anybody away that wanted to continue serving. Nathan has been to every meeting. He's not missed anything. He's been very productive. And I just don't see the reason not to reappoint him. I just don't. Councilmember O'Kane?
I'm very, I put him forward first. Yeah, I was gonna say, I put him forward first. I did, I mean, I felt he was, I feel he's done an outstanding job and I am comfortable with that. So I'm very comfortable saying that. I did, Mariel was outstanding though. So it was really hard.
And I'm, and I'm fine with that. And I went the other direction, you know, in terms of my top three, but I'm totally fine with that. I, I actually do agree that it's, it's a somewhat different bar for someone who has already served and has served well. And I think that really needs to be considered. So I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
So Councilmember File.
Thank you. You know, I'm also looking at who is serving and what do they bring to the table? Who is new that we're selecting and what do they bring to the table and what do we not yet have? So today, we're, we're preset on Tracy Benaszynski and Dwight Thompson, amazing choices and options. Very happy with those behavioral health, public health, behavioral social services background, environment, systems, management, you know. Excellent. We have a lot of business owners, a lot of same old sort of kind of prior sitting commissioners. So what would be new? I don't think new would be Metapore or Nathan. I think new would be Rose Hendrickson or John Culver. They bring, Rose Hendrickson has a maritime background as well as environmental sustainability and working with sensitive areas, as well as her engineering background. That's a different piece that we don't have on the planning commission yet. John Culver also brings together his experience of technology and working with large groups and engagement and efficiency. I do know Mr. Culver and I also know that he was very understated. So I know he works on national projects and statewide projects as well, very effective. We would be so fortunate. And I'm looking at what we don't have and what would be nice to grow into, especially given that we might be, you know, looking at Lake Point for development, right? Wouldn't that be great? But we would need multiple headsets there to bring different mindsets into the discussion, something we don't necessarily have. That's where I'm at. So I would be a no on Metapore and I'd be no on Nathan, even though I really appreciate his time served.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor.
I'd just like to, I think that we have something almost resembling consensus. So I'm just going to toss a motion out there to move things along. And if it goes down, it goes down. That's fine. Hang on, I would like to move that we appoint Nathan Lutzes, Tracy Benazinski, and, and Dwight Thompson to the planning commission.
A second.
Second. No, it's been moved and seconded. Can we go to a vote? Is there any more discussion on this one? There's a motion in front of, in our three candidates. Yes, Councilmember Shrubnik.
I just had one, one brief comment is that, you know, I, I do think we would benefit on the planning commission from a more diverse set of members. And, and when we have the next opportunity, you know, we should, we should continue to look at that. So that's all.
And like I said, I'm hopeful we'll keep all these people on the list and as, as we need to fill vacancies, we, we fill them. Councilmember O'Kane.
Following up, am I, following up on Councilmember Shrubnik's statement, I think it would be very good to have Mariel Metapore as our second, as our first backup. I just wanted to put that forward because she, she really is an, I, it was very hard not, I was, I was, I was a lock on all sorts of things. So I have to say that Commissioner Lutzes's service is meaningful and is his vision and age. He's, he's on the planning commission, planning for our future, our community's future, which I think is very important.
And we don't have another young voice on that, on that commission. All right.
I wonder if it's useful to have the community development director, Debbie Bent, I know she's here this evening, weigh in specifically on the suggestion of having a pool of applicants in the event that there is a vacancy so that you can readily plug people in that you've pre-vetted, in essence, have sort of almost two.
Yeah, we've done that.
It's always been in favor of that.
Yeah, we've always.
Would you like to assign sort of specific pool slots in the event that they don't make your top three?
Three chosen first.
There's a.
Chosen first, and then we can go through with the pool.
Was there a motion in second? I thought there was for appointing the slate. Okay.
There's a motion in second, yeah.
There is a motion in second, but we, we're off on other areas. We need to stay focused on a motion and a second. All right. So if there's no further discussion on Nathan Lutzes, Tracy Benazinski, and Dwight Thompson, please take the roll.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Batic, yes.
The motion is.
Okay. Three planning commission members. Now, the pool. I've heard the first alternate or the first one in the pool would be Mariel. Okay, that looks to be so. And who would be next? Any thoughts?
I would bring John Culver.
I second that.
This is not a motion. This is going through the list and seeing who we want. Where are, then with, with, oh, let me get the list back again.
Is there a way to go to just the order of the number of votes? I mean, that seems most.
Yeah, we could do that. That's a good idea. Councilmember Shrubnik? So where are we then? Anastasia?
So it sounds like the next group of people where you found most consistencies in order would be Mariel Metapore. And then Carlos Gill followed by John Culver. Rose Hendricks. John Culver and Rose Hendricks would be last, but it sounds like Mariel Metapore and Carlos Gill would be your next consistent.
Okay, where's Rose with John? Are they tied?
Yes.
And where is Emily Burnham?
Emily Burnham was not voiced as a top three.
Okay, fine. All right. Do we want to leave the last two then as Rose Hendricks and John Culver? Or do we want to further define that?
I'm sorry, I may have misspoken. What I mean to say is the next consistent ones would be Mariel Metapore and Carlos Gill.
Okay.
And I, I think after that is what David Mayor Baker.
All right. So I think that's getting out there far enough. I don't know that we have to go break those down further. I think that we have, we have Metapore and Carlos Gill. And then it's Hendricks and Culver. And we'll see what happens when that time comes. All right. Let's move on then. Next item on the agenda is the council policies and procedures for discussion under action. Councilmember Shrubnik and Deputy Mayor, you guys worked on this, right? And Councilmember File, you were involved also, right?
It was Councilmember Shrubnik and Councilmember Marshall.
It was Councilmember Shrubnik and Marshall. All right, Shrubnik, Marshall, and then Councilmember File. So anybody want to start out?
Just a correction, Mr. Mayor Baker. I provided the input within the timeframe requested.
So we have Marshall and Councilmember Shrubnik.
And myself.
And you. Anybody want to start this out?
Nigel wants to start.
Well, my, my hope had been that when we distributed the rule, the proposed rules that had been put together by the committee a little over two weeks ago, my hope had been that folks would use that time and come up with specific kind of specific policy-based amendments to, to parts of the, of the rules. And we set a deadline for Thursday. We all agreed, we all agreed on a timeline, I think, three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, that we would get in things by Thursday so that we would have the weekend to look over the proposed amendments. And the only thing that we got back was from Councilmember File, which was essentially an edit of the entire document, which is not quite what I thought, well, at least what I was imagining. I'm not sure what the rest of the council was thinking about when we were asking for amendments. So that's the one kind of draft or the one set of changes that we have in front of us under the deadlines that we all agreed to. I'm not sure how we would want to handle those amendments though, because they are fairly extensive. And you know, it's everything from substantive changes to grammatical changes. So I'm just not sure how we'd want to tackle the changes proposed by Councilmember File. So I'm just, I, that, that's.
I have a recommendation. I like to make a motion. I like to recommend that we return the document back to the committee with the suggestions for consideration and a final a final document to be presented later, maybe at retreat. And to speak to this, I've written a number of employee manuals and employee training manuals. And I understand the reason why we draft rules a certain way, why they are repetitive in a certain way, but they do need to be clean, clear, and concise. And that's important for all, you know, those who come ahead of us, you know, one day down the road. With that being said, that's my recommendation.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yeah, we had a motion, but the motion doesn't have a second, so.
I, I just, I, can we make comments before seconds? I'm sorry about not understanding.
You need a second before you start commenting. So.
I have comments.
Councilmember File, would you kindly restate the motion?
It was a little wordy. So I move to return the council, the draft council rules document along with my recommendations back to committee for. my recommendations back to committee for reconsideration, and then have a amended document brought back to us at the retreat.
See, my way, I think, well, go ahead, is, there, there doesn't appear to be a second, so that will die for a lack of second. We were very explicit that we wanted the rules brought to us before we adjourned. Um, I don't think that's changed. I, I'm looking at the two versions here, and just in the first paragraph, it's completely changed. Um, the substance is gone from Councilmember Files edits to what the committee put forward, so. It, it seems to me that we need to make some decisions in order to live up to what we said we wanted to do. To drag this thing out further and further just defeats the whole purpose. We had one council member leave over this. And, um, we need to, we need to, to, to deal with this, and we need to deal with this, uh, as we had discussed. Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes, I, I would like to call attention to a couple of things that have changed since we set the timeline. And I will state for the record that I was one of the people who strongly advocated for getting this done in December because it's such a high priority issue. But between the initiation of this timeline and where we are today, we did have a council member leave. The timing was framed before Councilmember Curtis left. Also, when we set the timing, I hadn't seen a draft document that we were going to mock up. So something that I can share is the substance of the document was different than what I was expecting. So when we agreed to reviewing this week, I was expecting minor edits. And I had substantial edits that I put forward because I consider the council rules to be like a policy document, and then procedures more of a how, and I saw coming, co-mingling in the document that I felt, A, I was, I'm, I'm, I'm just going to see some complete co-mingling there. I also felt that the preamble is something that we as a council, whether it's a preamble or guiding principles or values, that we as a council need to discuss together, and I would almost recommend, I do recommend it be facilitated, because we had issues this year, and we need to get to the root cause of them and ensure that we are working as a whole together with these rules. And in two, in order to ensure that, we have a vacant seat that we are about to fill, and a retreat following immediately. It seems to me to ensure a council of a whole, complete engagement on these rules, which we have not updated for, is it eight years or 12? It's been many years. And it was from us, you know, I'm just going to say, I found that the current rules to be very principled and very good. So any edits that we're adding to this document need to be highly considered. So I personally, and, and the reason I did not second Councilmember File was because I wanted to speak about how I feel that we, as a council, in order to get the results out of the changes that we are working towards, need more in-depth conversation and a decision on the philosophy and tone of how we're going to present them. So, um, I appreciate the time to be able to share that, but that's, that's where my hesitation came from, and I have to say, I see the care and diligence and thought that went into this document. Now, when I perform, when I went my, went through my review, my edits were substantial and too much for this discussion today without sharing my, my concerns before the, before the council. So thank you.
The only problem is we cannot do this during the retreat, because the retreat is already booked up with stuff, and our retreats tend to go a good, strong, day and a half. So doing this at the retreat is just not going to work. Uh, Councilmember Shrubnik?
Well, that's a surprise because we had said specifically, um, that we would start the conversation tonight, which we are doing, um, and that we would follow up at the retreat if we needed more. So we, we already laid that groundwork. I, I, I have a problem with saying we can't fit it in, it's a high priority. We, we need to fit it in if we need to bump something else. So, I mean, and I would agree that certain aspects probably would benefit from facilitated discussion, maybe the whole thing. Um, I really want to just thank, uh, Councilmember O'Kane and Councilmember File for their detailed edits and thoughtfulness. I mean, uh, you know, Joe and Nigel and I, you know, had been stewing, well, and, and Milton before me, I came in late, had, you know, been stewing on it for a while, and, uh, so, you know, had already kind of absorbed the changes and, you know, but being thrown at it, um, you know, I, I can imagine it's like, wow, I need to make a lot of changes. So I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and, and specifically for both of you actually raised the, you know, do we really need this preamble in the same way? Can we, can we separate the procedures from the concepts? And, you know, I, I, I think that, that type of thinking can be very helpful. Um, and I, I, I speak for just my own role in the little subcommittee. I think we were, at, at least for me, I was more about just the concept and getting it in there rather than kind of thinking strategically about what is, what is the tone and, you know, all of that. Um, it was more about, okay, we need to get this idea in there, let's get it in there. Um, so yeah, now it needs the rest.
Mr. City Manager, are you there?
Excuse me, Mayor Baker, uh, Councilmember Joe Marshall had his hand raised.
I, I see that.
Either way.
City Manager. Where are we at? I, I know you've seen the schedule on the retreat. Uh, where are we at for adding this? This is going to be a few hour discussion.
Um, I really don't know. A lot of the things on the retreat seem, I've only glanced at it. I haven't really digested what Michael Pendleton sent me. A lot of things he sent me seem like, kind of small issues that I may even be able to just resolve with the council member and not even have go on the retreat agenda on some of the things. So, I don't know. I, I really don't know if you could carve out several hours for this. I just haven't thought about it enough.
Thank you. Councilmember Marshall?
Oh, I was going to say, I, I think we can probably resolve it in less than several hours, and I do think that the efforts of Councilmembers File and O'Kane are important enough to try and at least incorporate those changes and those thoughts, so we can get, uh, perhaps a, a total buy-in from the whole council and come out of it with a, a really strong unity in our purpose. Um, I'm, I'm happy to be edited. It, I think it only gets better with more minds looking at it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
And, and I, I appreciate what everybody's saying, and I, um, appreciate Councilmember Files edits that were sent out, and I appreciate the draft that came from Councilmember O'Kane. Also, there was, um, there's a lot of good in, in both of those. I am a little irritated maybe that we're not sticking to what we had agreed on previously. Um, I feel like that's part of the issue why we were discussing council rules, is because there's been a little bit of um, questions around how much we're sticking to the norms and the rules that the council has. And for us to, as part of that discussion about rules, to ignore a previous commitment that, um, the council made to each other, kind of undermines, um, undermines that a bit. I understand why people, you know, I would, I, I, I want there to be buy-in from everybody, no question about that. But I do wish that the, um, that our agreed-to process of getting in amendments, um, last week, um, could have been followed, because I think we could have gone through those and, um, and made the changes to get buy-in from everybody tonight if we had gone with that process. Um, but it doesn't sound like, sounds like the council wants to, um, have more conversations about that. That is the council's, um, you know, prerogative. Uh, and I'll respect that, and I will happily, you know, I would love to still be involved with, um, getting this drafted and, and wrapped up. I've kind of enjoyed, um, the editing process on this. Uh, but, um, I, I do hope that we get this done sooner or later though, because our commitment had been by the end of the year, and, um, and I do think that we, we need some changes, um, sooner than later, so.
I'd like to see us start. We can start. It's nine ten. We got 45 minutes. We could start. And that's what we did say we were going to do, so.
Um, Mayor Baker, may I make a statement?
Certainly.
I, I would like to say that I believe that we did provide our feedback by the deadline. It may not have been in the form that was perceived or expected to be, but we did provide that feedback, and we are having the discussion that we spoke to having this evening, and Councilmember Shrubnik validated that. I also remember, recall that we did talk about possibly following up at the retreat. And I think it's very important, and I'm fine if we can go into the conversation here. I feel like we've had a substantial conversation about it already, kind of with a sense of where we are, that I am happy to work on putting together some suggestions, because I, 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 I would be very happy to work on that, and I would love it if we had a, another draft to review, um, for, you know, moving forward. But I do think there is some facilitated conversation that we, we do need to ground us as a council on our priorities and working together as a whole. And so, um, anyway, I, I, my main comment was, I felt that the council did uphold where we were expected to be. I had considered, uh, because of what it was, thinking it needed to table, but I'm thankful for our conversation today, because I think it's very important that we keep to those commitments. Thank you.
Councilmember File?
Just want to thank the committee for all your hard work. You did a, a lot of hard work, and it's a, a great thing to bring, uh, minds together to do, uh, the facilitator work that you did, and I appreciate it. That being said, you know, I, when I first opened the document, I had a visceral response similar to what Councilmember O'Kane did, and I had to stop, and I had to step away from it. And I went back to it, and I had to come back to it two days later. And so I could come to it with a nice, clean mind without emotion, and, um, and know that we see already such a change in the way our council, um, facilitates discussion amongst each other, and it's healthy, and it's good. And we, that is a beautiful thing, and that's, the healthy language in the document's important, the tone is important, and the dedication to committing to, to pulling that, the justice of the document that we finally agree to is most important. And following those rules, so, and we always can amend or suspend a rule, which is the beauty of, of what we do, when we need to get to that point. But I'm, I'm really happy with where we're moving on to. We're, we're very, very fortunate to be where we're at today.
All right, so. We want to work on this and edit it, uh, until 10?
Edit it to it. We could do it that way, or we could send it back to committee, either way.
I'm reluctant to have it go back to committee. I mean, it didn't get a second, and, you know, then we're just going to be in that position of giving you something that you don't want. So I mean, at this point, I think we need to start gaining consensus. Um, and, uh, you know, we, we, we did our, we did our after-school work.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Do you have a concern about, um, editing the preamble without, um, I, I think that section should be discussed at the treat, retreat. I think that it's substantial and, and about who we are. I am concerned, I mean, like, I, I would love another round of drafts for us to prepare before the retreat personally, not a committee, but for us to compile again. But if we want to go through this now, I think it's fine, but, um, we're, I'm still processing substance, and some of my suggestions are, like, I would like to do a draft pullout of a section to present, I, I, I mean, I, I'd be happy to, I, we can't, that's something that we couldn't do here, for example, like an appendix or a procedure section, um, to support what we have put together. So that's my concern is, is, is that, but maybe we can go through and determine where we're at now. I just, it's been a very meaty, substantial meeting, and I really think these rules are so important. I, I could have sat back and said, yes, let's go. Um, but I have, I, I really value the rules. I don't want to look at them all the time, but when I look at them, I want to really believe in them, adhere to them, uphold them, so that we are working together as the best council we can be.
All right, so I'm hearing people wanting it to go back to committee. I'm hearing people that don't want it to go to committee, they want to work on it themselves. Deputy Mayor?
I, I'm just trying to figure out from a process standpoint how we will work through changes if we come to a meeting at some, in the future at some point with essentially six or seven different drafts. Like, how will we work out the changes? That's my.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we're going to be here for months figuring this out with multiple meetings.
Yeah.
And we need to have a process in place that we can all agree to. I thought that we had that at one point. But we need to figure out what that process is that we can all agree to, so we can actually move forward instead of continuing the cycle of, you know, because I, I, I don't know how we look at Councilmember O'Kane's changes or Councilmember Files' changes that we have.
We, we don't.
And edit those.
One, we have one version right now, and it's the edited version that Councilmember File submitted. So that includes both what was submitted by the committee and, and the changes that were submitted on time. Um, and, you know, uh, can, any, any council member can have input as we go through these, including additional considerations, like Councilmember O'Kane may have. Um, so I, uh, you know, I, I think we could just, you know, take an example section, take the first section structure of meetings. Look at the, you know, very minor edits unless I'm misreading this. Um, you know, and then we talk about it, and is there anything that isn't in here that we need edited? And, you know, is there, I don't know, I just, I feel like we could at least make an attempt at starting. Um, otherwise, I think we will flounder even if we have a facilitator, so. But that would be, that's just me. I'm kind of linear that way.
Remember Shrubnik's, um, uh, I thought, in person, process here, it would be a good pre-see proceed model, something I'm very fond of, so.
All right. Where are we at? We're done for tonight. I don't know either, Nigel.
You're the chair.
I know I am, but I'm not hearing any clear direction here.
I, I, I thought I heard that we were going to proceed with edits, and I think we should start with Section 1, General, A, Purpose of Meetings.
Because we don't want to do the preamble. We want to wait to do the preamble at another time. Is that correct?
That would be my high recommendation, I think. Um, I mean, I, I liked, I mean, yes, I, that's my height, my, my, I think would be best. Excuse me, I don't want to stutter here. Excuse me.
I can support Councilmember O'Kane on that.
Yeah, I would, I would as well. It's kind of a different flavor.
So which version are we starting with, Section 1?
Oh, we'd be looking at the changes that Councilmember Files submitted, um, which start in 1B1, and proceed from there.
Could our clerk put up the documents side by side? That could help us, you know, say this or that. We could just take.
They're already, they're already incorporated, so we just.
Yeah, I mean, you're, I, I assume if I'm looking at this, the Councilmember Files' changes are the ones that are blue. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
I do have a, a. I do have a suggestion for General A, Purpose of Meetings. It's a very short one. If we could, it's one sentence. And I think it's it's an important thing, because one of the things that we were concerned about was the distinction between setting policy and operations. So, Purpose of Meetings would be, City Council Meetings are for the purpose of conducting city business, including but not limited to. And I'm just going to go all the way through down to the end where, at the last, at the end of the sentence, it says, and federal and state mandates to discuss and set policy direction for the city. That's why we're coming together, coming together to discuss and set policy direction for the city. I thought might be useful, because that is what the Purpose of Meetings is.
Meetings can have lots of purposes.
Yeah, I just thought about this.
Budgeted hearing from Planning Commission, I mean, you know, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that was related. I'm sorry.
I mean, if we're going to wordsmith, then I would say you remove the and before federal, put a comma after mandates, and add the language that Councilmember O'Kane had.
I can put it in the chat.
Do we want to pull up the document so we can all see what we're talking about?
I'll just
Anastasia, can you share?
I'm just going to copy my sentence for Anastasia into the chat.
I'm not going to open up Councilmember Files edits, maybe, in screen share. There we go.
This is going to be tricky. You're going to need to go slow.
Oh, it's going to be more than tricky.
Yeah, okay.
Let's think positive.
All right, all right, friends. Where were we? Point me to the exact direction.
Section One, General A, Purpose of Meetings, the end of the sentence.
Okay.
The end of the paragraph that ends with federal and state mandates.
Got it. Proceed.
Nigel actually did some good editing with the commas and ands.
Yeah, so I would remove the and before federal. I put it, I'd remove the and, put a comma there, and then put a comma after mandates, and then Councilmember O'Kane's language.
Yeah, which was, and I put it in the chat, and I can say it.
Reading.
To discuss.
To discuss?
Yeah, to discuss and set policy direction for the city. And for all, just, the reason I put it there was I thought that that was a big distinction of what, or something we were trying to make sure was clear is something that we do here.
Anastasia, can you zoom in a little bit? Oh, that's so much better. Thank you. So, in B one, all meetings shall be open to the public. I mean,
These look like grammatical or something.
These are grammatical.
Yeah, I don't know that we need, and well, and then there was a correction to the RCW. I guess I'm not quite sure, but
I mean, these were all vetted by
Yeah, I have
the city attorney, so.
Just so you know, my changes are the kind of blue purply, the dark
Okay.
So that is a corrected RCW's change.
Okay, that's yours.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not light blue, I'm dark blue.
Um.
I'm going to highlight where I'm making changes, just so that I
Can find them afterwards.
Yeah, Councilmember File, I mean, these seem, they seem pretty minor in this first paragraph. Would you be okay with not accepting them? Because they don't, they don't help the flow.
Right. That's where I was in disagreement. I felt it was cleaner and more concise.
I disagree as far as that goes. I think, I mean, we're adding words. I don't think it makes it a whole lot clearer myself.
No, I don't either.
Okay. We can move on.
Okay.
This is going good. Moving along.
So you want me to just, I'm just going to go through later, and you want me to reject
Yeah.
formatting suggestions specifically by Councilmember File?
In that section, I believe so.
Okay, in that paragraph.
Which are the light blue, not the dark blue.
Right.
Okay.
Looks like.
I'm going to, well, I'm just making a note for myself here. So the
Yeah, or, yeah, right.
Okay, so that I don't make an accidental mistake here and throw everything all kilter, off kilter? This is, I'm just capturing your direction right now.
Yep.
Okay.
For number two, I liked the original language, but I would change one word, citizens to residents or community members, because citizens implies, you know, US citizenship.
Yeah, that's a good catch. I tried to catch all the citizens when I changed public citizen comment to public comment in the rest of the document, and I must have been searching for, I somehow didn't catch that one when I was changing out citizens. So that's a good one. Thank you.
It's probably why I caught it, because you had done that, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. It's almost nine thirty.
Number File, this seems like you're just sort of, you're changing kind of the word order. Later, you have some really substantive things, but this one didn't seem substantive, but
Now include Councilmember City Staff Consultants. Yeah, I I have to agree with Councilmember O'Kane. I like the original language there with the change of citizens to residents.
With that.
Okay. So Anastasia, did you catch that? Okay. And then in number three, I don't think we normally have something at the beginning that kind of titles the section of numbered sections, or maybe we do. I don't know, it's a little, we don't in number one, number two, and then all of a sudden, we're introducing it in number three, so.
The only reason we did it in number four is because there were subbullets to that, so you had to have something to kind of
Right, so otherwise, we don't need it.
It's something I like to see in a even in a training document, for example. It makes finding the specific item easier. Yes, you can do a Ctrl F search, but if you're looking at paper copy, it precedes your prompt, which is nice. That's the reason for the edit I suggested.
May I suggest, because I understand where you're coming from. I think what would be great is if we can stick to substance tonight and then format the document when it's complete, because it's hard to track changes and see the edits. So I think at the very, the last thing we should do is look at formatting. Because I see some of, I saw some value there, but I just, it's a big edit, because we could have it too many times throughout the document where we're asking about it.
That is a trend of recommendation throughout the document I made, but I'm fine with looking at formatting, that type of formatting later.
So we're on four. There is a substantive change. I mean, the title, I don't care either way, so.
We can types instead of types of meetings.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same, it's exactly the same. No, I'm fine with that edit. The E, I think, is a substantive change there. It's like
Can't see that yet.
That's ours, that's ours.
That's our change.
So is there any substantive, it's like, two, what is it?
In E, are you planning on changing it from Monday and Saturday, the first and the third? Because you've got generally instead of first and third.
Well, so, do we have to lock it down hard?
I think it would be bad.
You're now making it not locked down.
Well, the, to speak to Deputy Mayor Harbeck's point, when we do have holidays, when it does throw off the balance of when those coffee with councils do occur, so allows for that flexibility, so I can support him in that mindset.
Except for holidays, don't, you're saying generally now, it could be any day that you just, that you wanted it to be.
Yeah, one thing that I see here is that that's covered by saying, so, the way I would suggest would be, coffee with council is an open forum for public to discuss issues with council members. It occurs twice a month, on the first Monday and third Saturday. If no council members are able to attend, notification of the cancellation will be made, and I think that covers it in substance. I do think, speaking to, yes, thank you, Mayor, sticking to consistent dates, which is what we do, it's how we do it. So I understand where generally came, but I like the idea of putting first Monday and third Saturday. And
That's fine.
Yeah, and I would remove at times to be announced, because it is announced, so we can have that on the site.
And so, like, the first, other than that, the first edit, it looks like it's in sub numeral two. Is that right?
Is that just a formatting change, or is that a substantive change? I can't tell.
Well, there's, it looks like a new sentence, no more than three council members may attend. At least that's how I'm seeing it.
Yeah, no, I
As I recall, our city attorney said her, her recommendation.
It looks like a city attorney addendum. You're muted.
I trust
I did not make any changes to the, to this version, that those are all light blue.
Well, it starts purple, and then it goes to light blue. Either way, I'm fine. Recommendations.
And this, this was a section that I felt had a lot of operational direction, so, in the original document, it didn't have bullets. And my, my suggestion would be to keep the original format with some minor editing, but the substance where I would have stopped it would have been, because I think it's important to say, council members may attend. If specific operational issues are brought up by the public, they should be asked to be, to fill out a citizen action request, so the issue is properly recorded, tracked, and managed within our current systems. My feeling, and this is, this is just a place where I felt, I think it's very important that we have clear direction, whether it's a procedure, how we use car, you know, like, the, the going into more detail here, I, I understand why we would, why we'd like to, but personally, I prefer the simple direction, and then somewhere that we talk about direct, you know, we should direct residents to respond to the city directly if they're not being, you know, through the car system. And I just, I just thought it was very prescriptive.
Yeah.
So I was okay with
Councilmember O'Kane, are you saying you like the original language of sub three? Correct?
I think I like the original language that it's, it was, I think, not formatted this way, so.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at what the committee submitted, and I'm comparing it to what we have on the screen, and the difference is, it looks like Councilmember File broke it up into subbullets under there.
Okay.
Think what Councilmember O'Kane's saying is that she likes the paragraph structure, but maybe wants to remove the last two sentences. Is that
Yeah, from if, are, to
Yeah, that's, I think that makes perfect sense.
Totally.
So you want to use citizen action requests to not change that? The public action request?
Called citizen action request. It's what they're called.
It's what it is at this point. Um. Can I jump in real quick? One of my coworkers reminded me that we're actually trying to get away from the car lingo as well, and we're just calling them service requests. So, as staff, we'd like to go through that document and just change car to service requests.
There you go.
So we're talking about undoing the bulging there and then taking out the last two sentences? Is that what, okay.
Yeah.
I think that works.
The last two sentences, meaning the last two subbullets?
Well, talking about undoing the bullets, but yeah, everything from if a car request has been filled out, and the person's not received a response, all that kind of minutia.
Yeah.
You know, kind of getting in the weeds, I think, is what Councilmember O'Kane was trying to get at there.
Yeah.
That it's getting a little too prescriptive.
That would be number four that you would delete?
Yeah, four and five.
And I like the, and we can look at formatting later. Thank you.
I know this is your document, but I actually liked number five. I think that's a more of a high-level principle that needs to be made. That coffee with council is not intended to task the city manager staff with new initiatives or operational tasks. I've got some, that's kind of a higher level principle that needs to be made.
Yes, I understand where you're coming from there, Mr. Carlinzey.
Could we incorporate that in the E, the E somehow, the definition of coffee with council, kind of the what it is? And just sort of put a clause, you know, results are not intended to task staff with, I don't know, whatever that, I don't know, just sort of put it right up front.
I really like the suggestion of a clause. That's great.
Yeah, I, yeah, I liked Councilmember Shrebnik's suggestion, because we should be going into this knowing that none of us should be coming out setting direction as individuals towards our city manager after these meetings, but we're there to be informed by the public and provide them the direction, if need be, to interact with the city. Would be my perspective, and I'm okay with either way. I just wanted to draw attention to, yeah, I'm fine either way, so, thank you. I did like Councilmember Shrebnik's high-level piece, though. Thank you.
Am I hearing correctly that you would like to include this final sentence here? And move it up here?
Councilmember Shrebnik, would you be willing to repeat how you phrased it?
Moving, it's moving sub five into the, you know, into the E, which is kind of the definition, you know, probably the, say, be the second sentence, coffee with council is an open forum for the public to discuss issues with council members, you know, it is not intended as blah-bitty blah. You know, I mean, I think it kind of flows from that, so. Does that work? Anastasia?
Yeah.
Okay.
You just have to deal with the delay of where you are and where I am, and me wordsmithing this on the fly.
Yeah.
One important wordsmith is to designate first and third, first Monday, third Saturday specifically, rather than generally.
Okay, let's see here.
And I think we would say, rather than twice a month, I just would say on the first and third, rather than twice a month. I would really streamline it down, tighten it up.
This delay is killing me. City tap, like wacky taffy. Um. It occurs twice a month on
No, just, just say on the first Monday and the, yeah, just go right to it, first Monday and third Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, it occurs on the first, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think will can be deleted.
Where are we? Okay, there we go. I have this recording too.
Right, so we're on to F.
Yeah.
Back to E really quick, it's just, I also want to include operational tasks. Anastasia has initiatives, but I also want to have operational tasks. New, new initiatives or operational tasks.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what sub five said, new initiatives or operational tasks, just so you can just copy that up. Yeah. So F, it looks like grammatical again. So if we can live without those changes, that would be great.
I, I really like F and the reason why is I would certainly hope that my children would speak with clear language. And this document reflects that on us all.
Yeah, we could put a period after needed and then make, starting when is another sentence, that's probably the cleanest.
Okay. I, I had a suggestion. But I, I just, I prefer not using will if it's something we do. The way I had framed it was council direction on workload and priorities is set at the annual retreat in January. Under special circumstances, an additional extended meeting may be necessary to adjust priorities and make long-term plans for the city. And this follows up, it ties in with an edit down below of something I delete, I, I recommend deleting.
That's beautiful.
Paste it for, I'll put it in comments for Anastasia.
I don't know, I thought it was beautiful, about other people.
Generally, retreats are twice a year, once for a budget setting process and once for goal setting.
It looks like I'm waiting on a chat. Here we are, and this language posted in the chat is to replace F.
Yes. But Mayor Baker did bring up the budget retreat as well.
Yeah, we do have two retreats, not one.
And well, what we've been doing, I think is we've been having budget retreats on even years.
Yeah, it's not annual.
Yeah. It'd be, it'd be worthwhile to enter in, we have a budget retreat, you know, a second bullet, because a budget, council direction, and then the budget is and I didn't want to get into semantics so much tonight, and that's probably why I was hesitating on edits tonight. The, I, I think it would be great, I, I actually, when I was doing that, I was trying to figure out a sentence to do the budget piece and I just didn't get there, so I.
Just added to the second one, under special circumstances, an additional extended meeting may be necessary to adjust priorities. Budget, you know, or budgets and make long-term plans, you know, just put or budgets, I don't know.
I like, yeah, I like the idea of being specific that the budget is every other year.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't think even years are necessarily special circumstances.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. I thought it was cool. I, I thought that was a really nice clarification.
Okay.
I, I would just add, after the first sentence, just say budget retreats will be scheduled on even years. Period.
Yeah. Are scheduled, are scheduled.
I'm fine on four with Councilmember File's edits, except for the capitalization of ad hoc, which isn't capitalized. But the rest of it is, I'm fine with, I don't know, it's kind of grammar again. But.
That will be later returned? Yeah, ad hoc needs to be fixed.
Yeah, later return does, it's actually not returned because they never got there in the first place, so it's later brought, it's actually, it is brought forward.
Yeah, it's brought forward to the council for, for consideration.
Yeah, returned implies it came there already.
Yeah, and I, I have just a, a very, maybe it's, it's actually maybe a formatting thing for the use of three versus spelled out three. I'm fine with sticking with three since it's consistent throughout the document, you know. Did we want, and it's just something for us to consider when we get to final draft. But I thought that the original sentence was pretty, pretty good. I, I actually had no edits other than my question about, do we want to write the number three or spell out three? Which is.
That's a stylistic issue, yeah.
Yeah. Ten you spell, yeah, but.
I'm fine either way.
I hear you, Councilmember O'Kane, I had the same thought, but I, I was going around the document.
Alright, so did we, did we get these edits?
Yep, I have notes.
So we'll, we'll keep the brought forward, I don't know if you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay.
And I, I have one, one edit, I, I really prefer R, I don't know why I'm stuck on that, but on that will be brought forward, or, oh, I guess you're, that is right, that's fine, that's fine, I, I, I was in the wrong tense, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm a little uncomfortable on five with the edit, because they don't work for my brain, but that's just me.
Yeah, I, the, the sentence will be prior scheduled doesn't scan for me at all. I prefer the previous language myself, but just talking for myself.
We can go with R for Councilmember O'Kane, even though she hasn't said it.
You read my mind, I was fine either way, but yeah. Down with my Rs, I'm gonna hold back. I thought, I thought the original was fine, I had no suggested edits.
Good.
I'd be fine with R.
Instead of will be.
Right, exactly.
You'd put shall be if you want to make it solid.
Well, I understand the, when you use shall in a, like a rule document or a legal document, it can have more significant ramifications. Legally, which we might want to.
Okay, so it reads, all public meetings are scheduled and announced, I guess.
Yes. They are, in fact.
And, and then there'd be a period, I guess I.
Noticed.
What the sentence is, and then a period, agendas will be prepared or?
Oh yeah, notice is a better word than announced, notices.
Yeah, now it sounds like you're, you've got a megaphone on the city steps.
I mean, I believe that that came from the previous, I mean, that, that came from the older, from the before times rules, so.
Yeah, okay.
But notice.
Do we need a period there? Do, and then like capital agendas will be prepared and made available in advance, and, yeah, okay. Meetings may be added to the schedule or canceled. So is it approved by the city manager or discussed and approved by the city council? I mean, is that, I just want to make sure that's correct.
I mean, further down, we talk about the city manager putting together the agenda in consultation with the mayor, because I strongly feel like there needs to be council involvement with the creation of our agendas for our council meeting, because they're council meetings, they're not staff meetings. And so there needs to be some council input into the agendas.
Well, this was already, this, the previous was just council, now it, it says approved by the city manager.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Or.
The number we have five. Yeah, I, I don't want to add or city manager and or, I don't.
Yeah, I.
I mean, we, we have to vote.
Right.
Usually. To cancel a meeting.
Right, 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 yeah.
Well, Don, can you weigh in here, because like the, the meetings on the 21st and 28th of this month. They're regular meetings, but we as staff are just sending out a cancellation. Sometimes we put it on the consent agenda and have you guys cancel the meetings, sometimes we just cancel them. So I actually kind of like your direction there.
So I do recommend for regular meetings that the council actually take some action to cancel a regular meeting. And that could be in the consent. But that's the, that's typically what I've seen, is that council, in fact, count, council, cancel their own regular meetings. Normally, special ones, you know, that's put on by staff because they're necessary and, you know, notice is done, so those aren't typically canceled anyway, but for regular, I do recommend that it be council.
Yeah, so then that means we wouldn't have that clause then.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that means that you guys may want to cancel your last two meetings.
Yeah, well, we should have, yeah.
Well, actually, never mind, yeah. You can't do final action in a special meeting, so how do you do that? Keep going, let me think about this.
Alright, are we on six?
I don't, do we need to have to the schedule, or can we just say added or canceled? Because I.
Oh, yeah.
Don't have a, we don't have a schedule per se, we have a calendar of regular meetings, but I think added or canceled. It's the same point.
Taking away a word's good for me.
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah, you want to pair this as much as you can.
Yeah. Look how quickly this is going.
I was really worried about this, I think we're doing fine.
Times it helps to just dive in.
Three of 28, so let's not get too, too excited, but yes, we're moving along.
So, so six, there was an added sentence here? It would, I thought this was. Just get moved, or?
We were working on a proclamation, we were going to talk, didn't we talk about proclamations like a month ago? How we wanted to handle those and, and some sort of policy for that?
I thought we did.
We, we want to bring a proclamation policy to you in January.
Okay, so can we take this out then, for now? Yeah, okay.
We're getting way ahead of ourselves on that.
Yeah, okay.
And Anastasia, are you gonna delete that approved by the city manager clause?
Yeah, I was waiting for a final on that.
I think that's the direction.
We heard that, yeah. We're taking out six A, are we on seven? Okay.
I mean, this is just flipping around part of the sentence, there's nothing of substance there. But there's nothing substantive, it's a grammar issue, we can tackle that later, I think.
Yeah, just put a, put an S on topics, if we're going to have it in this order, but. Because otherwise the grammar doesn't work. Um, okay, so eight.
Manor, M A N N E R.
Where are you? Oh. That's great.
Wouldn't you rather be in a timely, what would that even be?
Manor, I want to be in a manor.
Be a mansion with a lot of clocks?
Yeah, my right, an English clock-filled manor.
Is, is that, Anastasia, since this, this is, kind of implicates you, is, is that, is that realistic, 24 to 48 hours?
Give me a second.
Okay.
I would almost rather not have the words timely manner, I would just say if we want to put a timeframe.
Yeah.
Because they will be posted within this timeframe.
Or just omit the timeframe and put timely manner, one or the other.
Well, I'd be in favor of removing timely manner and going with the time.
Assuming that that works for.
Yeah, I think we have to. That's realistic.
I.
Well, the truth is, I think that special meetings have to be posted within this timeframe anyway, and all regular meetings could get a head start.
Well, no, this is talking about the posting of videos.
Yeah.
Recordings. That's about public transparency, really, if we're at this edit and why, the why is, you know, if you need a confirmation of what happened, the why, if the community for some reason wants to bond in a, in a timely manner on their side, right?
Why don't we stay 72 hours since then we encompass all possibilities?
Compromise.
I think that's great, and it also allows for technical difficulties and strange things that could, would make it difficult, so I think, because it's up tomorrow. So this is going to be up tomorrow, but, you know.
So it's regular and special meetings will be recorded by the city clerk or designee.
And then I think we, yeah, comma and posted in a timeline.
And posted within 72 hours.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
Yeah, because it's clear, I like, I like having the timeline because it's clear.
We don't need that exception then, right?
No, no. Okay, so then we're way down, yay, look at all that we're gonna skip.
It's about 10 o'clock, is this a good time to stop?
We said 10:30, we're working.
We actually said 10 o'clock, but this is still reinforcing to scroll down.
I, 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 I would, I would love to stick with 10 o'clock, my, my focus is starting to melt a little, and I think we've had a really substantial night.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor. I, I brought up the, the issue about the cancellation, there, there's nothing in the OPM that requires this council to actually count, can't cancel a reg, a regular meeting, it's in their discretion if they want to add that to their own rules. I'm just clarifying that to say that the staff's notices that were already sent are sufficient and didn't want to muddy the waters, but just want to let you know that before we adjourn.
Alright. So that's something to think about, whether we want to add that, but right now staff has already noticed it and we're fine. So.
In general, it's good policy to have it in the consent agenda at least, so that it's kind of, you know, then it's obvious it came before us and I don't know, if, if we, I mean, there'll probably be times that we can't, but, you know.
But I'm, I'm hearing that's your preference is to cancel meetings and consent agenda, right?
I like that idea. It's a good documentation track, so.
Okay.
Alright. There's no further business to come before us. We are adjourned until genuine, no, until tomorrow. At 6 P.
Can someone give me a good direction of what to do with this document? It just sits with me.
I would. If you could send it to all of us, I would love to look at it, I'm.
Part that we edited, maybe get that nice and clean, I don't know.
Again, yes, Mr. Again, yes, Mr. City Manager.
Oh, and do you want to talk about when you're going to come back and finish the rest of it, or? Do you want to do that at the?
I heard that we were going to do a retreat.
You want?
Well, I think, I mean, the preamble, I think we wanted facilitated, it seems like we're making really good progress even without a facilitator on the rest. So I'm wondering if, I don't know. Pardon?
Want to have more meetings in December?
I, I don't look, doesn't look like anybody wants that, but.
If I'm asking, that's not going to be done.
I mean, our next opportunity is at the retreat, that's the problem, and that does have a facilitator.
That's a possibility, we can certainly forego some other city work that we would normally do at the retreat, Mr. City Manager?
Um, so I, this year I was suggesting that we don't have a council meeting on the Monday right after the retreat, because it's just a lot. So that was going to be January 11th, where we were not going to have a city council meeting. One thought is to do this on January 11th.
Whatever's left from if we don't get through at the retreat, I mean, because if we have like part of the discussion at the retreat, yeah.
It would allow for the participation of the new council member. Which would be a nice thing to do.
And we're done at what time tomorrow?
Should be, I think it's a three-hour training, so six to nine.
Well, we'd have another hour tomorrow night if we wanted to do that.
It's not noticed in our chance.
Okay, okay.
Well, I guess, yes, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I would prefer like February 1st.
Let's do March.
Huh, well, I, okay, in full defense, in full defense, in full defense, January 11th is also the first day of legislative session, so. You know, that's, I, I am biased in, when I saw that the meeting was going to be canceled, I was a little excited because that first day is a little bit brutal. I can still do it because I don't have to commute to Olympia.
Fourth, we have too much on the plate for the, we're just doing the interviews, right? So we would have time on the fourth?
Yeah, I guess, I, I have just never, in all my experience, ever had a council meeting that was nothing but edits.
Well, we gotta get to consensus, so.
Usually there's things, policy, things that we're working on substantive in nature and not just editing a document. We have a committee that does that, so this is.
Committee didn't work, David.
If you want to do it, we'll do it.
And we, we tried the committee, we tried other things, this is, we gotta get it done, so.
Well, evidently you don't, because we're putting it off into January now, so it's not that urgent anymore.
Point of, of privilege, Mayor Baker, just a quick correction here, because this is important, that we do respect each other and the work we do together, it's important that we do that, and.
Anybody, I don't know what you're saying.
Hearing me.
So. Yeah, so unless there's other business to come before us, we're going to be adjourned, do we want to work on the fourth on this? Nigel?
I, I don't know, I mean, how long is it going to take to do the interviews for council and, and then vote on somebody, and then we'll immediately put them to work editing a document? Because they'll be sworn in at the, you know, because then there'll be a council member at that point, so I don't know how long it's going to take to do the interview process and, and appoint somebody.
Mr. City Manager?
There's very few edits in the rest of this, just looking at it. So. It's really not that much.
Yeah, so we're, we're giving you 30 minutes per candidate, and there's three candidates, so there, you could be done by 7:30 with your interview, so that's still some time to do some edits.
Well, I'd like to put a time limit on it. To work until nine or 10.
Go to 10.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, we only did an hour and we got through about half of the edits, the actual edits, so.
I mean, we, we go to 10.
On the fourth and we'll go until 10 o'clock.
Yes.
Alright. If nothing else to come before us, we are adjourned.
See y'all tomorrow.